Good evening, West Orange. It is March 22, 2016. And welcome to our conference meeting agenda. Madam Clerk?
This is to inform the general public that this meeting is being held in compliance with Section 5 of the Open Public Meetings Act, Chapter 231, Public Law 1975. A notice of this meeting was emailed to the Star Ledger and the West Orange Chronicle on October 14, 2015. A notice of this meeting was also posted on the bulletin board in the municipal building, West Orange, and filed in the office of the Municipal Clerk of the Township of West Orange on October 14, 2015. Councilwoman Castellino?
Present.
Councilman Guarino?
Present.
Councilman Kukoviac?
Present.
Councilwoman Courtney?
Present.
Council President Cirillo?
Present. Thank you, Madam Clerk. We are going to get started this evening with a special presentation from our social media consultant, Perry Bashkoff. So I'm going to call him up to the podium at this point to talk about Slide the City. The Slide the City Initiative coming to West Orange, a national initiative, national trend-
Yes.
...that promises to be a lot of fun for everyone.
Yes. Hello. Good evening, everyone. So, I guess just over a year ago, I was on vacation with my family in South Florida and came across this event that was called Slide the City, which I didn't honestly pay too much attention to until I got there. And what it is, is depending on the location, it is the world's largest slip and slide. And basically, what we're looking at is roughly 800 to 1,000 feet, depending on, again, the location, slip and slide. I saw it in downtown Delray Beach, which was very flat, and immediately I said, wow, it would be so much better if there was an incline, you know? Who has inclines, West Orange? So we had reached out last year, we had a few hurdles getting it done last year, but reached out again this year to try and bring them back to West Orange in association with our annual street fair. And so we have done a lot of legwork. We have met with fire, police, DPW. We actually had one of their corporate folks come out from Salt Lake City a few weeks ago, which is where they're based, and do a walkthrough of the location, which is tentatively set for right here on Mount Pleasant Avenue, right in front of the library, which is a decent incline if you walk it, and a decent length if you walk it as well. So, the point of this, obviously, is to continue bringing great events and items and showcase what West Orange is about and bring more people and foot traffic through. And what a better way to bring more foot traffic to our annual street fair than bringing an event that, quite honestly, we don't have a lot of heavy lifting to do on it. They do a majority of it, or they hire folks here in town to assist with it. They cover all costs of managing this event, and it's a party. It is a great event, and I'm confident that it will help, you know, bring additional foot traffic to the street fair. We've obviously been working very closely with Megan to make sure that there's no overlap and make sure that, obviously, the messaging and the marketing is as such, right? We are going to be marketing, we'd like to market this as, you know, the downtown street fair featuring Slide the City. So, we've prepared a bunch of documents, which I believe the council has received in terms of the proposed layout. You have elements from the contract that I've kind of pulled out based on questions that were coming back and forth around the weather policy and security and water and all of that. So, it's a great event. I think that, you know, because we had the hurdle last year with the permit, I think there was a lot of noise and chatter about it, and I think people are really eager to see us pull it off this year. So, I don't know if you guys have any specific questions about the event, about any of the details? I tried to address as many as possible in those documents. I know that there's always some things that come up, and honestly, I'm doing some question and answer in real time with the point of contact in Salt Lake City, so I'm happy to answer any questions to the best of my ability.
Thank you, Perry, for being here and for bringing this initiative to the municipality. I recall last year, there was a lot of talk, not only within the municipality but outside of town. There's some folks that talked to me about it, and they were so excited to come to our town, so it will assist in promoting our municipality, and in addition to that, showcase our town and the street fair, which is going on at the same time, which is a way or a market, a way of promoting our downtown businesses. So, I think that it's a win-win situation. In regards to parking, has there been discussion about perhaps asking some of our neighbors or any parking plans that you wouldn't want to talk about, since we're expecting such a large volume of visitors?
Yeah, we've talked about it with the police chief, with the fire chief. Everyone felt confident that it could be addressed, you know, in a similar fashion to the St. Patrick's Day Parade, in the way in which we kind of identify lot options, side-street options, but not necessarily directing anyone to any one parking lot, knowing specifically that the street fair specifically using 80 and 59.
Right.
So, really kind of identifying where the event will take place and encouraging people to park, you know, in and around the area. That is the kind of current plan, right? And I think if you look on the diagram, the drawing, at the bottom, you can kind of see how Slide the City has changed it up this year, where they stagger the number of people. So while the total number that they would consider a sellout is 5,000 people, that's staggered throughout the day. So we will not necessarily have 5,000 people descending on West Orange in this one location at one time, and they've done that purposefully, obviously, to prevent kind of wait times and traffic and that type of thing.
Yeah, I'm looking at your diagram, so don't think I'm like on social media when you're speaking. And if I was, I would probably be on our town Facebook page. I also want, I do want to mention that the administration worked really hard last year on trying to get this event to become a reality, and unfortunately, there were some bureaucratic issues that came up, but I know how hard they worked last year, getting in touch with DCA, both the mayor and business administrator sayers, and I'm sure you were involved with that as well. And I'm glad to see that, you know, this year it's going to happen if my colleagues and the council approves the resolutions before us. So with that said, colleagues?
Sure. Thank you.
Perry, thanks. That was one of my questions was about a parking plan. I know we had discussed that already. And this, I just got a copy of this Slide the City logistics plan. Who would see this? Because, again, under parking, where it says which lots can be used, is there a way to eliminate that so that that really strictly should be for the street fair attendees and vendors?
Yeah, so just to be clear, the logistics plan was something that I put together-
Okay.
-based on questions that were coming in, contract terms. I just kind of wanted to give a Cliff's Notes of all the details. So, yeah, so on registration, when someone goes online and registers and puts their credit card down, there is a message that we can control and that we can work with Slide the City to send out. So that message can be, you know, park in available lots, park in side streets. We don't, we definitely will not be calling out specific parking lots, again, given the knowledge of the street fair's necessity for it.
Those two.
Yep.
Thank you. I'm glad to see that there isn't a revised agreement, because I know that the health department did want the chlorinated water, so I'm glad to see that.
Yep.
I don't know about the rain or shine part, but can't control that. What was my other question? I guess I'm looking at this map, almost like a planning board application. Who would notify, with every planning board application, residents in a 200-foot radius of something are typically notified? Would that be something that Slide the City could do to notify the residents, because there are road closed here?
Absolutely. So Slide the City would be responsible for that messaging, obviously working very closely with the township in whatever capacity. They have also offered to extend a free slide to any of the residents that happen to be impacted on this, on this street, as a courtesy. But yes, that is something that we are discussing in terms of the actual messaging and the timing of that messaging.
And I also understand that the slide takes up three-quarters of Mount Pleasant, but there's, if someone does have to get out, they could still get out, right, on the north side?
So, yes, so my understanding is that, yes, it is going to take roughly half to three-quarters of Mount Pleasant, with the one side being left open strictly for emergency purposes, and given the fact that the nursing home is there.
Right.
So that is something, again, that we've talked at length with police and fire, to ensure that in the event that either emergency vehicles had to access anything within that blocked-off period, had to get onto 280, or had to get down to Main Street, that side of the road will be left passable for emergency purposes only.
Do we have a checklist of responsibilities, you know, about, I guess this is helpful, but is there a checklist of what actually has to get done?
Yeah, and, you know, when I asked for that from Slide the City, and we started discussing it, I mean, the reality of it is, most of the checklist is on their end, right? And they are responsible for hiring the third parties, for setting up barricades, dropping them off, returning them, cleaning up, removal of everything. We have to provide our fire EMS and our police folks, and, again, they are covering the cost of all of that.
Right.
So in terms of checklist, I think we are now into kind of the details around, specifically around some of the sponsorship discussion, the merchandise discussion, but in terms of actually who is responsible on the day of the event for setup and whatnot, that is Slide the City. Again, the minor details around who's going to actually walk and hand the flyers out, I mean, if I have to, I will, but it's, you know, those types of details is something that we will cover, hopefully, on your approval of that.
And it seems to me, from this map, that the library will be closed on that day?
That's my understanding.
Is Slide the City allow, say, a concession stand or something for the library to set up? And again, the library, any members here or anyone listening, if they wanted to set up their friends at that point, it would be a nice-
Yeah. Yeah, absolutely. We've absolutely discussed that with them. They are open to that in any capacity that we need to support it.
And when you mentioned the Slide the City sponsors, we're hoping that the sponsor, because we have, how many vendors already signed up for the street fair? We're hoping that there's not a conflict between the two. That's understandable?
Yep, and we had, yep, we had a lengthy conversation about that last week. And to my knowledge, the sponsors that they have on a national level are given kind of first access to travel with them to the events, based on the demographics of the city or town and the available space. So while on this schema you see five slots, that doesn't necessarily mean there's going to be five, and it doesn't necessarily mean there's going to be one. Things, and I kind of put it in that, you know, they have a Lasix company that travels with them, they have a solar company that travels with them.
Right.
We did specifically talk about food and drink, and it is something that they are happy to remove as an option from this event because of, because of, obviously, the street fair. Speaking with the fire chief, he was concerned, or voiced a concern about, in the event that is a very hot day, having some sort of hydration option here, which we, I'd spoken with Megan about, either having some sort of water station or whatnot, because the sponsors specifically that Slide the City would bring would not be, would not be selling items, right? So I think they've talked about things like a power bar vendor or a powered drink vendor that basically handing out samples types of thing. But we can, we can, again, talk through the details of whether or not that makes sense, or whether a water station is the best option, but definitely no food vendors or drink vendors to compete with the street fair.
Another question, too, on, in the agreement in security number seven, how, tell me how, I mean, I do understand the extra police officers, 16-hour duration, you know, that could be easily calculated, but the section on the Slide the City agrees to pay for any additional public safety charges, the last paragraph, how do we calculate that? How do we keep a running tally of what's needed or?
So, yeah, so we have talked through that. This would, this would cover overtime, this would cover additional-
Additional police officers, EMTs.
Exactly. Exactly. So, yeah, so it is, it is hours to invoice them on, and, you know, I would assume that it's something that those individuals or the supervisors would-
They know how to do it.
We have internal processes.
Yeah.
I imagine so.
They will get billed for what they owe.
We're very good at billing.
I see that.
I'm very good at billing.
I do have one more question. Because I do know last year, there were approximately 3,500 people pre-registered for this event, and I see these different times here. Is that going to be part of the registration process, that people are not going to descend 3,500 or-
Exactly.
Hopefully more, but they'll be registered at different times to attend?
That's right. So they had some learnings last year, which I guess is always a good thing, maybe it did work in our favor that we weren't part of last year. But what you see on this kind of breakdown is, they've changed it up where, instead of having unlimited available all day, they've now limited that unlimited option to nine to 12. And you see that the numbers within the cells are the actual numbers of people in terms of the tickets that they will sell. So they, after that initial three-hour slot, which is unlimited, then they break it into the two-hour slots. So while people may hang out, watch, I'll be honest, when I saw it in Florida, I stood for 45 minutes just watching, because it is amazing. But, but people may hang out and watch. But again, the, what our goal is going to be is, obviously, to keep people moving down Main Street, right? So whether they're here to watch or they're done, now it's time to go see the vendors, get some food, beer garden, et cetera. So, yeah, so obviously, can we prevent 5,000 people from coming at once? No, but, but from their experience in this, that is why they stagger this out.
They can manage it.
Because someone who's scheduled for 4:00 PM to 7:00, probably won't be here at 9:00 AM, right? They're going to come a little bit later.
My last question is about references.
I mean, though this is wonderful, that West Orange to be the first to have the opportunity to have the slide, but do you have references, not just Delray, Florida, but from other locations that have already done this?
Yeah, so there's a document that I had sent around, and I think I had sent to you, Susan, earlier this afternoon, that included the reference, the references from various cities, including Raleigh, North Carolina, Connecticut, some Canadian cities. They also have a bunch of news articles and links in here, as well as references to the fact that they bring their staff in, obviously, and so what does that do in terms of driving new business just from the number of people that they're bringing, right? From hotel rooms to vehicle rentals, again, utilizing local services and shop local opportunities to drive that. It also kind of details what, you know, from, there's a pretty cool thing that they do with nonprofits, where we have identified the scholarship fund, the West Orange Scholarship Fund is a nonprofit that has an opportunity to actually receive a give-back, basically, from Slide the City to earn money, and they kind of outline what they've seen in certain municipalities for that, for that nonprofit. Just quickly looking, the average nonprofit benefit in 2015 was $7,500, which would be kind of a nice thing to throw from this event as well. So, I'm happy to distribute this to anyone who doesn't-
Thank you.
Thank you, Council President.
Thank you, Councilwoman. And this will be the first in New Jersey?
This will be the first in New Jersey, and to my knowledge, the first in New Jersey or New York. New York, they had similar issues that we had last year in terms of permitting, so they wound up doing kind of an inflatable thing in the city, but this will be the first in New Jersey, yes.
Okay. Yes, go ahead.
Thank you, thank you, Council President. Perry, thank you. Great presentation and great work, a lot of hard work. It's going to be an interesting thing for the townships, it's going to be a nice, nice event for us and good tie-in with the street fair. Quick question. Since Route 10 is a county road, and also that the overpass is a state entity, have the state and the county been pulled into the discussions and notifications?
Yes, we've spoken with Chief Abbott and Lenny Lepore, who have communicated with them of this, and we are working on what barricades make sense and whatnot, to just ensure that because there will be people kind of huddled up and around there, making sure that everyone's safety is taken into consideration. But yes, the on-ramp will be closed, but the off-ramp will remain open.
And will the, are we thinking of having any state police or county officers in the area at the time, or?
Probably not.
Yeah, I don't think so.
No? Okay.
I mean, this is going to be no different than us doing the St. Patrick's Day Parade. It's the same shutdown, almost, so we're kind of pretty well prepared for it.
Okay. Just want to make sure they're included in the conversation, because something may happen if there's an emergency, you know, they think that it's open and it's not, so.
Oh, no, there's no way we're going to do it without notifying and letting you know that. We can't do that. We're not going to be allowed to do it. Actually, the exit, the entrance ramp going westbound will only be open for emergency vehicles. That's why that left lane's going to be left open.
Correct.
So that if we have to use emergency vehicles, either on Main Street or down in here, our emergency vehicles can go up that lane, get right on 280 if they have to.
Okay.
So that'll be left open for only, for emergency vehicles only.
Okay. Thank you, thank you, Mr. Sares. Thank you, Perry.
Just a minute. Jack, with the parade and the 280 at Prospect Avenue being closed, were there any issues with traffic and-
Prospect Avenue.
Prospect with the construction going on at Prospect?
No, I mean, we didn't have-
We didn't have anything that's-
We didn't have any issues going to parade, not on our own.
Councilman Kukoviac, any questions?
Thank you.
Sure, if I could, thank you. Mr. Bashkoff, are you the person to ask about the changes to the contract? We got the revised contract early this morning?
I can actually-
Okay. Well, we can say them till later.
Okay, yeah, I can, I can say the changes.
Unless you want to just deal with them now.
If you want to, I can run through them real quick, if you want to look at the contract.
Yeah, that'd be great. I just would like to make sure I solve the changes.
Yeah, we had some conversations with some people over the last couple of days, so we made some changes in the contract. Unfortunately, their attorneys didn't approve of them until last night, so we weren't able to get the document out to you until today. But first change is on, when you look at the agreement, the license agreement, Section 1, where it says use of the property, we added in the last line to say that STC shall contract directly with New Jersey American Water Company for the cost and use of any fire hydrants used in order to supply water for Slide, for the slide equipment. Originally, we had agreed on that, but people wanted to see it in the contract, so we put it in the contract. The second change would be number 2, where it says term. If you look at the original contract, it said the hours of operations were going to be between 11:00 and 6:00, and some people wanted that changed from 9:00 to 7:00, because that's originally what they said they were going to do, so we changed those numbers from 9:00 to 7:00. If you go down to number 7, where it says security, it says STC shall be responsible for the compensation of five extra-duty officers. We took out all the numbers there, because unfortunately, when we hire people on overtime, depending upon your rank and how long you're on the job, your overtime rate is different. So we didn't want to quote a specific number, so what we did was, we asked them to take that out and just put in that we would pay them at their overtime rate. So whatever officer works, whatever their overtime rate is, that's what we're going to bill them at. The next change is right underneath there, where it says STC agrees to pay. One change it will be for all charges incurred by the West Orange Department of Public Works and any other additional public safety charges incurred by the township beyond the normal staffing levels, including but not limited to police and fire. We added that language in here, because we had some conversations with some other people who said, well, you know, it doesn't mention Public Works. And again, we had made the agreement with them, but people wanted it in the contract, so we put it in the contract. The next change is number 8. The escrow account was originally $10,000, and we wanted to increase it to $20,000, so they agreed to increase the escrow to $20,000. And number 10, under maintenance, there was, it said all garbage receptacles, and one of my Greenpeace friends called and wanted recyclables put in there, so we put that, so we put recycling receptacles in there also. And the last line, we changed to say that STC is responsible for the removal of all garbage and recycling that's collected at the end of the day, because they had agreed to do that, but we put that in the contract also. And then Section 13, under Township Emergency Services, it said Township shall supply ambulatory and first aid services during the term. And again, they had agreed to pay for that, but everybody wanted it in the contract, so we put it at the cost of STC. And then we said one ambulance, and instead of two emergency medical technicians, Chief Smorado said we would need four, as per protocol, so we put four in there, and they had agreed to that. And I believe those are the only changes in the contract. Yes, they are.
Okay. Thank you. Yeah, it's just, I know I've brought this up before, but when we get revised contracts after we get the original, it's a lot easier for us to, if we can see the changes that are marked, like a red line copy.
Yeah, like I said, I'm really sorry about that.
That's okay, that's okay, just-
The issue was, we didn't get their attorneys to approve it until they paid last night, and, you know, thank God we got it done before tonight's meeting, so we sent it out this morning. But that's, that's my fault.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Great.
Yes, Councilwoman?
Thank you, Council President. Thank you, Perry, for your presentation. Just so the council knows, Ms. Brill had invited me in on the last meeting to be a council liaison for us, to, where all the police and the fire personnel were represented with the, with the representative from Slide the City. I walked up and down Mount Pleasant, also with Mr. Lepore was present, our health department was present. It was a very good, informative meeting, and I want to thank Mr. Sares for some of these language changes, because some of these came directly from that meeting and some comments and remarks that were made, so I appreciate that. Question, though, my question to you, Perry, are you going to be that person on June 4th that holds the clipboard with the checklist checking off?
Yeah.
Because I know Ms. Brill is going to be at the other side at the-
Yep.
We can't clone, we can't clone her that day.
Put a full one.
Yeah, so it's a great question, and something that I probably should have talked about before. So Slide the City has two paths of help for the day. One is volunteer path, which is directly associated with the give-back to the nonprofit. The other is what they call hired hands, that, again, is a local opportunity for folks to actually be hired by Slide the City for the event. So there will be a lot of help in addition to the folks that they're bringing. In terms of who's carrying the clipboard, yes, that will be me. I will be the one that is liaising throughout the whole thing to make sure that everything goes off without a hitch. And so I basically have a point person on their side, they've asked for a point person on this side, and it would only make sense for me to be there, yeah.
So not to put pressure on you, but so 4:00 AM, when they roll in-
Yeah.
-you're going to be the guy that's, not to put that on you-
No, listen-
-but I mean, it has to be on some, a township representative.
For, for 11 years since my son was born, I've been getting up before 5:00 AM, so I'm ready. No, look, yeah, I am planning on being there, and obviously, I have folks that are part of my team to assist as well for a variety of different tasks, but yes, we will be there for the duration of the event to be the point person for, for West Orange.
And also, after the setup is completed, once the slide is rolled out, does a representative from the township, other than yourself, official, a fire, a police official-
Yes.
-come inspect the slide to make sure everything is-
Absolutely. Health department will be there, fire department's going to be there, police department's going to be there, all will be there.
So all the appropriate representation will be there.
Correct.
And I was glad to see that, you know, we have it in there, the water needs to be chlorinated with all the little children sliding down the slide. And just last but not least, when we have one of the meetings, just in regards to security inspections, like I know you say you're going to, the chief or somebody will be there, or assign a person, just to make sure, especially in light of what happened in today's world, unfortunately, just to make sure, because I know they're bringing their own containers and bathroom setups, just to make sure all that's inspected properly for safety reasons, obviously.
Police department is putting together an operations plan as we speak. Hopefully- Police Department is putting together an operations plan as we speak, hopefully that'll be completed within the next week or so.
Okay.
We have to do things by protocol.
And then any other promotional questions I have, I'll be in touch with you.
And I actually, I forgot to mention, in terms of the marketing, you know, Slide the City actually has allocated an advertising budget that they spend most of it on digital advertising, but they look for a radio partner as well to either kind of do giveaways or whatnot. So they're looking to go big on this to bring as many people to this event as possible. Again, all of the messaging will be downtown street fair featuring Slide the City, so we're working with them closely on that as well. But, but I would say the majority of the heavy lifting of the promotion of this event is on them. Obviously, we have a vested interest in promoting it from any of our touchpoints as well, but they will be spending hard dollars in addition to everything we've talked about tonight to actually promote the event as well.
My last question, originally in the plan, or at the last meeting, there was discussion of a shuttle bus. I see that's been taken out of the plan, any reason for that being taken out?
Yeah, shuttle bus, just from an incurred cost perspective and trying to make the connection to the street fair. Having people park, you know, where we were kinda talking up at Essex Green or whatnot, again, just from my knowledge and recollection of the actual event that I was at, if I was parking miles away, had to take a bus, was soaking wet, whatnot, I probably wouldn't venture down to the street fair to hang out for a few hours. Here, their car will hopefully be within walking distance, they'll be able to venture down and still feel that they're not, you know, too far from home base, if you will.
And Mr. Sarris, did we, have we asked the school district if we could use Washington Elementary School for parking that day for the street fair?
I have not done that yet.
Okay, we may, I think we're gonna need it.
Like I said, we're putting our operations plan together now, and hopefully we're gonna have a lot of contingency plans that we'll be able to utilize if we have to. Like I said, if we're limiting this to 5,000 people versus the street fair, this is no different than us running the St. Patrick's Day Parade with probably 10,000 to 20,000 people, so we should be, we'll be able to. The question's gonna be, it's gonna change, obviously, as we move along. And the simplest way I can put it is Slide the City's gonna be here to put it together, and we're gonna be here to make sure they put it together properly and it's done right.
And we will be getting weekly updates in terms of the registration. So we have an idea of, you know, is one time slot over indexing than others, so that if we have to kind of rearrange the police or whatnot for the different time slots, we'll know that.
Question?
And I always get a little nervous when we talk about volunteers, because, you know, we have to depend, it's great that we have volunteers come out and work, but I'm glad to see you have the West Orange Scholarship Fund involved with it, because that organization brings out a lot of volunteers, so I know we'll be fine that day. Good choice.
What happens in case of rain?
So it is, so it is rain or shine. And, you know, as, when I asked that, they said, "Well, they're getting wet anyway, so a little bit more water."
Hopefully, it's warm.
But, but yeah, there is, there is, and in reference to thunder, lightning, and high winds, those are the two items that they do take into consideration. There's a time slot and a time period that they wait until they open the slide again. But yes, it is a rain or shine event, so fingers crossed, not only for this, but obviously for the street fair. We want, we want sun all around.
Council President, thank you. Perry, I really, I like the idea of the advertising and the marketing on Slide the City, but I guess as a trustee of the Thomas Edison National Historic Park, I think we need to find the official name of the street fair, because, you know, we're talking about Downtown Alliance and so much work comes out of that committee, but the Downtown Alliance partnered with the Chamber in Edison, because historically, it's been Edison Day, the first Saturday in June. So when they do that advertising, I think we need to find out what that message is.
That's the cool part about digital, obviously, you can put about six or seven messages out in the market, see which ones work the best, and, you know, it's not like a radio ad, right? And the radio ad, I think, will be West Orange Street Fair featuring Slide the City type of thing, but the digital piece, which quite honestly has much more reach and is a little bit more interactive, we can experiment with that.
Right, national site, mhm. Oh, and I have one more, okay, one more. We're talking about the, not the shuttles, but I see my counterpart, John McElroy, is here. And John and I rented golf carts last year, and we shuttled people, just to use that word shuttle, we shuttled people back and forth, so.
Yeah, Megan had messaged me today, said that I believe that's planned for again this year, so that's great, yeah.
Okay, that'd be helpful.
Council President?
Yes.
My question, thank you. Perry, you, and also we're just talking about our counterpart, Mr. McElroy, who has wanted to answer the question. Is that will, will our Downtown Alliance, like with your clipboard, will you be clipboarding with Mr. McElroy and our group to let us know exactly what's going on? It'd be a good handle that we know, and the street fair knows, and you know what's going on, traffic wise, you know, things going on. Will that also be occurring?
Yeah, I would hope so.
Okay.
Yeah.
Walkie-talkies for everybody.
Yeah. And, and, you know, we've been very clear with Slide the City that the reason that we're choosing this day is to drive awareness and bring new people into our street fair, right? And so they've even come to us with some ideas around how we can connect the two, and people that are here, how we get them down there, including, you know, everyone that registers and comes that day gets a bag. What can we put in that bag that incentivizes them to come down to the street fair? So those are the types of details, exactly, you know? There's some details there in the, in, that we can work through. Yeah.
Okay, no, and that's what Sam might point to, so there will be communication.
Oh, yeah, there's communication already, yeah.
Will there also be a pre-meet with the people from Slide the City with the people involved in this, I mean Downtown Alliance?
We've done that.
Yeah, we've had, we've had a few of those. Yeah, they came from.
If I'm saying is, but a pre-meet before the actual day, like, you know, you know, actually a status meeting, like, you know?
Councilman, we're doing this in conjunction with the Downtown Fair. Everyone needs to understand that, because I, people have been in my office all week talking to me about this. We are doing this in conjunction with the Downtown Fair.
Oh, no, no.
Not doing it on our own.
No, 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 no. What I'm trying to say, Mr. Sarris, and I know we are, it's, it's been a call. What I'm just saying is, the day or so before, just like, you know, we do the, you know, when I do the Macy's Parade, we have, you know, a pre-meet the day before to know that everything, all the Ts are crossed, everything's in place and everything.
Absolutely.
Okay.
With that said, I would like to call Deputy Grand Marshal and I guess Chairman. To talk about the, the plan on the side of Downtown West Orange, and please highlight.
No top hat.
Yeah, and please highlight how you're trying to capitalize on the additional volume.
You talked about the golf carts, and we actually decided that the shuttle buses actually, they take up too much room and too much route. So we're looking into getting longer golf carts with great sponsorship opportunities. And just run the golf carts up and down Main Street, because it'd take a lot less space, we'll have to close a lot less roads, and it'll help flow, and it'll shuttle people back and forth. Most people are gonna be able to walk a block. The car show is gonna start at Park Avenue this year, so we're bringing everything this way. But for the people that have trouble walking, they can just get on and off a golf cart anywhere along the way. So that's, and I think that'll be easier and way less costly than the shuttle buses.
Much better than the shuttle buses.
They're expensive to run, and we can run from the parking lots and just, you know, help people with the flow. So that has been considered, and that's the route we're going.
And I think we should also note too, that it's Mr. McElroy's and Selectonics 32nd anniversary of being in business, so congratulations to John.
Thank you. Any other questions?
I thought you were gonna say he's 32 years old. I was gonna say, there's something wrong with that.
Thank you, Perry, again, very much for your hard work.
Thank you, guys.
And your continuous effort.
We'll get you a nice big clipboard.
I'll be ready.
Thanks, Perry.
Thanks, Eric.
Gonna move on to our council liaison reports. Any of my colleagues wish to report on their activities since our last council meeting?
Sure, yeah.
We'll start on the right side this time, how's that?
Okay.
To be fair. Councilwoman Castellino?
Yes, I'm looking for my flyer, just give me a second.
You can yield to another colleague before you prepare.
No, I'm good, I'll be quick.
Okay, terrific.
I'm just getting a time from Mr. Kea, okay. Just wanna remind folks, this Thursday at West Orange High School, the Recreation Department will be hosting the Spring Fling for all little youngsters with lots of spring activities for the upcoming holidays, that's this Thursday night. And you can look on the Recreation side for the little activities that they'll be presenting. Dr. Josie Velez from our PR, our PR Commissioner, she is our chair, our Chair Commissioner. She is hosting a cancer, or she's speaking at Whole Foods next week on March 29th on behalf of our Organization for Cancer Prevention Plan. So she'll be speaking on how to lower your risk with cancer-fighting foods, tips for avoiding carcinogens, and how to boost cancer-fighting benefits of foods and ways to reduce your cancer. So she'll be speaking at Whole Foods next, I believe March 29th is Tuesday from 11:00 to 12:00 p.m. And because last week, our last council meeting, we celebrated, it is Nutrition Month. So we are thankful to her. And also thank you, John McElroy just left the building. I just wanted to thank him on behalf of the PR Commission, the use of his black convertible that some of our commissioners rode down Main Street at the St. Patrick's Day Parade. And they looked wonderful in it, all dressed in green, so that was a nice event for our committee. And last week, putting on my school board liaison hat, we had a community meeting, which some of us were at, at Gregory's School, talking about, giving some details about the proposed plan that the engineer, that, from Petrie Engineer, Mr. Petrie was there, and I wanna thank him and Mr. Lepore for helping us put that together, gave some details. There was the concern residents that came to our meeting prior. I know some folks were upset that more folks were not notified of the meeting, and there'll be another meeting, so we'll get some more, some more invites out for when the plan comes back. But also, the, the plan will eventually go before the Planning Board for a courtesy review, and the public is welcome to, to go to that meeting as well. So there's opportunity there to see the plan, and it was a good meeting. There was a few parents there, we didn't have a lot of parents there, because they had been in other meetings before, and we wanted to make sure that the folks across the street that are directly, were gonna be affected by it, had opportunity to speak to Mr. Petrie, and they did. So hopefully, when the plan comes back, they'll be able to move forward, and the input would be heard, and I, I think it was a productive meeting, so.
So revisions are being made to the, the, the pre-plan?
Yeah, what he explained at the meeting was, they put together a plan that maximized the parking spots. I guess the school had asked for multiple, what maximum parking spots that could be obtained. And so they reviewed that, because obviously, we only have it budgeted for X dollar amount, and, and so that may not be obtainable. So what will happen then is, he's gonna take all the information, compile it together, and come up with the final plan. And at that point in time, that's gonna take about six to eight weeks. And so once he has that information, I think he'll have a better design that most folks will be pleased with. I'm being very optimistic, but I think the engineer heard the concerns of the residents, and even parents were concerned. So I think it was a, it was a thoughtful meeting for everybody that attended, and we hope to see a nice design that they'll be pleased with.
Well, no, I wanted to say that, I do, because the, once that conceptual plan is revised, and they said about six to eight weeks it would go before the Planning Board as a, as a courtesy review, so.
There'll be an opportunity, so folks who felt that they missed the meeting or didn't know about the meeting, they will have plenty of opportunity to review, review the design, so. Thank you, Mr. Sarris, for helping me assist with that meeting.
I was at the assembly meeting, yeah.
Were you at the meeting, Councilman?
Yes.
I don't know if you wish to add to the?
Sure, I was gonna say, I, I thought it was very helpful, and, and Councilwoman Castellino's work in putting that meeting together was, I thought, very helpful. We got a lot of people into the same room, finally, what, including some of the neighboring residents who had not had a chance to take a look at the designs and provide input. And they were there with people from the school, schools, both parents and administrators, who had been there the whole time. So it was, I thought it was a really good exchange. It wasn't, at times, the most pleasant, but I think it was civil and, and.
Perry was respectful.
There was a lot of, lot of good questions, and I think it was very helpful to the community to do that. And I'm glad to hear that we'll have another meeting too.
Yes.
Because there's still a lot of questions about that, and it was just a conceptual plan. I don't think anybody in the residents, I certainly didn't understand that it was conceptual, so it still could change significantly based upon, I would assume, some input from the county too, which is, which is reviewing it.
And it will eventually work its way here, you know, when the, the process goes out to bid. Any, anything else in your report?
No, that was it. Okay, thank you.
Thank you again for your hard work, Councilman.
Thank you. Very briefly, the, wanna just mention St. Mark's Church, two things. One, the permit that the church needed to begin stabilizing the walls there was issued more than a week ago. I haven't seen any work there, I just wondered if perhaps the administration knows something that's going on or a timeline?
I, I do not, Councilman, I know the permits were issued, to be quite honest with you, I have not followed up with any, with it, with looking at any work that has been done. I will speak to Mr. Tracy in the morning and find out what's going on with it. But the permits were definitely issued.
Yes, and I contacted the church this week just to ask where that stands, I don't have any additional information. But, so, anything you could learn, if you could send an email to the council?
I'll follow up tomorrow.
That would be great, thank you. Also, the, the St. Mark's Church fire displaced a congregation there, and as I mentioned a few meetings ago, Mr. David Drill, who is part of the ownership of the office building just north of Town Hall, had expressed some interest in allowing the congregation to meet there. And just wanted to say that that has actually come to fruition, that the congregation, or at least a part of it, has, has met there a few times, and they are just ecstatic at being able to meet, particularly West Orange residents here in West Orange, as opposed to having to go back to Newark where their old location was. So again, I just wanna give a shout out to, to Mr. Drill for being so accommodating and being so neighborly. And I think he's, is he still on the board of the Downtown West Orange?
Yes, he's a chairman.
So I just wanted to cite that too, so he has a interest here too. The last thing, I just wanted to sort of note, and I think perhaps Councilwoman McCartney knows more about this, but the Open Space Commission has, the members have been invited to an upcoming meeting of the Environmental Commission to discuss some potential improvements to the Rock property, which affectionately known as the Rock at the top of Mount Pleasant Avenue across from the Summit Apartments. And I can't figure out when the meeting is, whether it's Thursday or Wednesday, and I'm hoping you know and can direct, because if it's, if it's Thursday, perhaps some other people outside of the, the room might be able to attend, if not, at least I can be there with the people I can contact, so.
Sure, may I?
Please.
Okay. The meeting is Thursday, March 24th. The Environmental Commission always meets the last, the fourth Thursday of the month. It was, for some reason, was on the website, it was supposed to have been changed, it was posted as a Wednesday, it's not. And they meet, we meet at 7:00 o'clock over at the, in the conference room, in Room 109. This actually started a few years back, when John Linson, our town forester, our tree forester, and Nick Salis, the Assistant Director of Public Works, presented a plan to Open Space and to the Environmental Commission about, more like a beautification plan. We had public charrettes at that time, I wanna say 2013, we even applied for a grant. Last year, we did receive, we, meaning the Environmental Commission, submitted a grant to ANJAC, the Association of New Jersey Environmental Commissions, and we were awarded money for that grant. So the funds are going to be used to plant trees. After the public meeting started a few years back, we met with residents in the area that they were not looking for fruit trees, we wanted to do some kind of community garden with Mount Pleasant School and with Liberty Middle School, create their own produce and school and a whole fitness program. But the residents in the area did not want to attract additional wildlife, so we didn't go that route and decided that it could be an arboretum. And it could also be a memorial garden, something, a beautification, because as, it seems that many of our schools have beautification gardens, and as they expand it, I know the one that Gregory has gone, and that was something I started 30 years ago for a first grade teacher there. So this could also be a plot for that. It also has, the milkweed campaign that we have been working on. It also has, the milkweed campaign that we have been working on also, about repopulating monarch butterflies. So that's, this is a beautification plan. The funds that we received from ANJAC would go toward the entryway to, for 577 Mount Pleasant Avenue. That's really...
So that's great. I'm so glad you clarified that. But I wondered, who do we need to talk to to get the date changed on the town website?
I know the chairman already spoke to, yeah, so that should, that should have been changed.
Okay. So just, just as, for anyone who out there might want to be attending this, Thursday is Holy Thursday for Roman Catholics, and the late masses here in town are late that night. And I actually asked Mr. McCartney, who's the Chair of the Open Space Commission, if we could move it earlier, and he said that the two landscape architects who are going to be talking about this, I'm looking for their names, Heidi, Ms. Heidi Cohen and Mr. Ben Heller, have gone out of their way to be there at six o'clock, so that anybody who wants to attend and still go to Mass can get there early and ask some questions, and then take off, and can do Kill Two Birds With One Stone, which is probably not an environmentally correct metaphor to use.
Right, because we want this to be a bird sanctuary also.
But I just want to give, again, a shout out to Ms. Cohen and Mr. Heller for accommodating on short notice, and also for Mr. McCartney for working hard to get things done.
Great.
That was good.
Six o'clock, yes.
Six o'clock.
And that's all I have.
Thank you, Councilman. Councilman Guarino?
Thank you. Thank you, Council President. Just want to just mention, just put on your calendars, June 4th is the West Orange Street Fair, and of course, Slide the City. You know, got to keep that going. And thank you, it was a great presentation. Just like to bring up another point, too, just a good friend is Adam Goldman, who is the proprietor and owner of our Dunkin' Donuts within the township, and who just built the new Dunkin' Donuts on North Phil Avenue, was awarded today from Dunkin' Donuts Corporate as the most green facility in their organization. So Adam was awarded that, it's a green facility. And you do know, too, that at that facility, there is a charging station. It's not free, but there is an electric car charger at Dunkin' Donuts, and the story's been recognized as one of the most green within the Dunkin' Donuts chain. And I know with Susan and the Environmental Commission, I know Mike Brick will be making a presentation very shortly that'll be public. So it's really, you know, shout out to Adam Goldman and his contribution to the environment and to the community. Just to note, too, on March 30th, at 7:30 P.M. at the Turtle Bag Zoo at the Essex County Educational Center, we'll be having our monthly pedestrian safety advisory board meeting. Residents are invited to attend. At that meeting, Professor Charles Brown of the Rutgers Blousting School of Government and Planning will be presenting our finalized action plan, which will be incorporated within to the township master plan of our complete streets. And we should be very excited, and if you'd like to see more and actually the presentation, please feel free to come and attend. It starts at 7:30 at the Turtle Bag Zoo Educational Center in West Orange. It should be, it should be good. Also, another call out, too, for the pedestrian safety advisory board, we are submitting a grant application through the township for a $4,000 grant to enable us to work and move forward the incorporation of the complete streets proposal within the township master plan. So we're really excited about that. The board members have been very, very proactive. They're looking for grants, they're looking for ways to apply for the grants, and, you know, my shout out to our board, they've been very, very proactive, and something we need to be very, very proud of going forward. Last but not least, the same night that we had the Gregory School meeting, I was invited to attend an assembly meeting with Assemblywoman Myla Jacey and Assemblyman John McKeon on the proposal for Assembly Resolution 3420, which would be reallocating $122 million, sorry, $122 million of tax relief money to the local school boards. And West Orange would be in, if it was the pass, West Orange would receive an additional, let me find my page again, $2,474,486 if this bill was to be passed. And just a, because I don't want to read the whole thing, because you'll be here all night, but what this bill does in the statement is, this bill makes a supplemental appropriation of 122.2 million in fiscal year 2016, 2017, from the Property Tax Relief Fund to Department of Education to provide additional state school aid to certain school districts. Specifically, the bill provides additional aid to a school district if its equalized school tax rate in the 2015-2016 school year exceeded the statewide average of an equalized school rate of at least 35 percent. We'll get this out there so people can see it, but I know you can go online and look at the Assembly proposed resolution. Hopefully, it will pass, but it will give additional, much-needed aid to our local school board. And that's all I have. Thank you, Council President.
Thank you, Councilman. Good work. Keep lobbying for that.
Absolutely. Thank you, Council President.
That would be good for a tax relief in our municipality. Councilwoman McCartney?
Thank you, sir. To pick up on the planning board, the planning board will meet on April 6th to discuss the complete streets implementation. What the planning board will have to do is amend the circulation element of the master plan, and that discussion will happen on April 6th at 7:30 here in Council Chambers. I wanted to say congratulations to the parade committee for the outstanding work in Sunday at the parade, last Sunday at the parade. It was a really beautiful day. And the Chamber of Commerce has welcomed, just in this past week, 12 new members. It's true. So, and there are two ribbon cuttings. One will be on April 2nd, Saturday, April 2nd, at 6:30 P.M. the Hopeful Plaza, and that is for A Sip, God bless you, this is true, at A Sip of Art, which is behind Wine Legend at the Hopeful Plaza. And the other one is the Atlantic Federal Credit Union, recently located at Essex Green Plaza. That will be on April 23rd at 3:00. Everyone is invited to attend, and welcome new business to town. The, talking about the, God bless you, talking about the Environmental Commission, on April 2nd, we will celebrate Arbor Day at Roosevelt Middle School, and the students there will plant a tree at Roosevelt, we do every year, at Pick a School to Plant a Tree. And then 25 of the Green Team students at Roosevelt are going to go to 577 Mount Pleasant Avenue that we just discussed, the Rock, to plant two trees there as part of this landscape plan. That's to be discussed on Thursday, March 24th, with the Open Space and Environmental Commission. That's on Arbor Day, 1:00. Everyone's invited to attend. And two more invitations, talking about electric charging stations up at the zoo, we have one of the original electric charging stations at Glenmont Garage at Welland Park. So the Friends of Thomas Edison National Historic Park are having a spring tune-up at the Glenmont Garage, Cars and Cocktails, on Thursday, May 19th, between 5:00 and 7:30 P.M. And the idea is to raise funds to help conserve the gas pump, the electric charging, refurbish the electric charging station, and other artifacts located in the Edison Garage. You can purchase your tickets at Friends of Edison, which is F-O-Eddison.org. They're $35 for non-members, $25 if you join Friends of Edison. It just sounds like a fun, fun evening. And Green Hill, Green Hill Chamber member will be celebrating 150 years here in West Orange. Fifty of those years were in Newark, and the rest were here in West Orange. And that will be Thursday, April 28th, at 6:00 as the Pleasantale Chateau. More information online at Green Hill. Can I just say something about, I have to say something about St. Mark's, because this is just fate. I received a call from an auctioneer, a local auctioneer, that put me in touch with the Avon, Avon by the Sea. Avon also had a church that burnt down, and the auctioneer was asking me about their stained glass windows, if we can use the windows for St. Mark's. And I was really pleased to make that connection between St. Mark's and this church in Avon, for them to attend the, to attend that auction. So we have to find out if it can in fact work, but I just, I guess it's social media and news, thanks to our, all the publication on this, that people reached out to make this happen. So I think it was, was very good news. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilwoman. Councilman?
Thank you, Council President. Just another thing I meant to bring up, I know a lot of people, the general public, are very concerned today about the quality of water, particularly the quality of water within our school systems. But just to let the public know, that the township has been very proactive on addressing this issue and looking at it. And Mr. Sares, could you just say a few words about that, of what the township's been being very proactive to the question about water quality, and particularly lead?
Obviously, when all this stuff happened, you know, our Health Department Director, Mr. DeNovo, went out and got some information basically from the Department of Environmental Protection, from the federal government. And she's been, she came down and spoke to me about a, actually, it's a, I don't want to say a book, but it's a, it's a guide as to what townships could and cannot do with regard to trying to solve this problem. Obviously, it's more of a Board of Education problem than it is a town problem, because in the two instances that we've seen on the news, it's not the water that's going in that hasn't let in, and it's, once it gets into the building and it filters through the systems, that's where the light comes in. So Teresa has been working diligently on going through this manual, and we're going to pretty soon have a meeting with the school board, not the school board, but the school superintendent, and try to go over some certain things that we might be able to help them with, or to do, to just make sure everything is, is okay. We have had no complaints, knock on wood. There's nothing that has happened, but just to be sure and be proactive, we want to stay out in front of it, and we'll be doing some things with them shortly. The bottom line is, we want to meet with the school board first and not, you know, go rushing in there and like we're taking over, so.
Thank you, Mr. Sares.
And the big issue is, like I said, it's not really the water that's going into the buildings, it's once it gets into the buildings and gets into the system, that's what really the problems are.
Council President?
Thank you.
Yeah, I just want to add, and thank you, Councilman Guarino, for bringing up, because I had neglected to in my report, but I had spoken with School Board President Lab and had, you know, referred a few of the inquiries that we have been receiving via email. So they have been forwarded to the school district, and, you know, we've been asking them to, you know, if they could make a statement, but I'm sure they're going to wait till they have their meeting with you before they do so.
Yeah, we'll be doing that probably within the next week to 10 days.
Thank you, Councilman.
Thank you.
Yes, thank you, Council President. I wrote all my notes on this letter that I received from Luna Stage, also a Chamber member, and then I lost sight of the announcement on Luna Stage. So Luna Stage has their world premiere of Old Love, New Love by Laura Breenza on Friday, April 15th, and the play will run through May 8th. Tickets are available at lunastage.org. And I wanted to say thank you. I want to say thank you to the administration and all the department heads. It was a somewhat uneventful budget hearing day, because everyone understood, there are no surprises in our budget, because there's not much there. But it, just thank you for everyone pulling together.
Thank you, Councilwoman. And I just want to say that it makes me real happy to see the downtown redevelopment initiative get started, and I just want to commend everybody that's been involved with this issue. And because it's, there's so much promise, and we stand by our position that redevelopment is a strong policy tool that would allow us to help revitalize the downtown area. We have these initiatives, Slide the City, the Downtown West Orange Alliance, working really hard to market that part of town, and this redevelopment initiative will go a long way to add on all those efforts, so it makes us really happy to see that finally, seeing the construction finally get started. So with that said, Madam Clerk, the conference meeting is complete. We're going to get started with the public meeting.
Council President, can I just follow up on that?
No, Councilman, let's do it during the public meeting. We already took a long time.
That's fine.
This is to inform the general public that this meeting is being held in compliance with Section 5 of the Open Public Meetings Act, Chapter 231, Public Law, 1975. A notice of this meeting was emailed to the Star Ledger and the West Orange Chronicle on October 14th, 2015. A notice of this meeting was also posted on the bulletin board in the municipal building West Orange, and filed in the Office of the Municipal Clerk of the Township of West Orange on October 14th, 2015. Councilwoman Castellino?
Present.
Councilman Guarino?
Present.
Councilman Grokovia?
Present.
Councilwoman McCartney?
Present.
Council President Cirillo?
Present.
Will everyone please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
The council is now in their public meeting.
Thank you very much, Madam Clerk. We're in the public comment portion. Councilman, I'll allow you to begin the remarks. I'm sorry that I didn't want to continue the conference meeting, because it's, we have members of the public waiting, and it's, it took longer than expected. And I was, I yielded the floor so many times that I think that we should hold our remarks, allow the public to come up, and then I'll let you go first, so.
It's perfectly fine, and I appreciate that. I appreciate that.
Terrific, thank you for understanding.
Just, just very briefly, just a couple of questions about redevelopment. I know there's been a lot of talk that actual work has gone over there, and those on the council know that I've tried to get as clear an idea of what the actual construction start is under the governing agreements. And I thought the governing agreements say that the actual start of construction is when you move all of the heavy machinery onto the site, or at least some heavy machinery onto the site. Has that happened yet, or do you know where things stand now, where things are going?
All I can tell you is, what's been told to me and what I've seen, are there, they're doing demo work inside the building. They have their demo permits, which are in place, which they're supposedly going to be working on doing demo work, and then putting the garage up first. That's what I've been told. I haven't seen any heavy equipment there, but I have seen bodies down there. I mean, if you even read some of the local newspapers, there have been people who have talked to people who were down there and said, yeah, we're on the foreman, and we're working. They're doing work inside the building, I know that, but I haven't seen any heavy equipment at all.
Okay. Because, again, the agreement, I think it's pretty clear, that says 30 days after the signing of the agreement, they should have heavy construction there. So, again, maybe if you get word of that, if you could send an email to the council, that would be great.
Absolutely.
The other question was about the permits. So they have the permit to do demolition inside the main building?
Correct. Their demo permits are still active, actually, from their, from their last, from the application in 2007.
Okay.
So those permits are still active. They have not pulled any construction permits yet.
Okay. But I think they do have, don't they also have a permit to build the foundation of the garage?
Yes, yes, they do.
Okay. But those are the only, those are the only two major permits, the demo and, okay. And others are in process, or?
They have not filed for anything else yet. They've submitted their final plans to us. They submitted the final plans to Mr. Tracy, I think by Thursday of last week. He has the final plans, and he's reviewing the final plans before he can issue any permits. There's a lot of documents.
I'm sure. Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Councilman. And thank you for allowing us to inform the public on the progress that's going on in downtown, and we're all real happy about that initiative. With that said, any member of the public wish to address the council? Yes, ma'am?
I have a question. I can make some copies for you, should I?
Yeah, that would be great, yes.
Because I've tried to sleep to the famous five minutes.
The famous five minutes.
Distributing copies.
Thank you.
I don't see, the clock didn't start yet, so you still, you've got some bonus time. Appreciate it, thank you.
Thank you.
Oh, okay.
And you did send us an email, so we've been informed prior to the meeting as well.
Yvonne Una, Shepherd Terrace. Dear council members, I would like to ask for your help in addressing the continuing violations of the noise ordinance by suburban disposal, also known as Roselle, that I have documented since 2007. As you know, Roselle has been contracted by the town to haul residential refuse and recycling. Let me briefly summarize the problem. My husband and I are residing in our homes since 1998. It was only in 2007 that I was made aware by a neighbor that West Orange has a noise ordinance that regulates the times when garbage and recycling may be picked up. The noise ordinance states that the emptying of garbage cans, quote, between the hours of 9:00 P.M. and 6:30 A.M., quote, end, is subject to the noise ordinance. Roselle, however, has since at least the last nine years picked up trash and recycling on countless occasions prior to 6:00. on countless occasions prior to 6:30 a.m. and as early as 3:41 a.m., according to police incident reports. During the last eight weeks, I alone have reported four violations. Since learning about the township's noise ordinance in 2007, I'm calling the following people each time an incident occurs. First, I call the non-emergency number of the police and ask them to send out a call. I then call Roselle's service number and tell them about the early garbage pickup. Lastly, I email Mr. Fonsino in the Health Department to inform him about the early garbage pickup by Roselle. Since 2013, I started contacting Mayor Parisi, in addition to Mr. Fonsino, Roselle, and the police. It is my understanding that each time I called Mr. Fonsino, he spoke to Suburban's Foreman, Jack Brown, to remedy the situation. The people who answer the service number at Roselle are and were, without exception, extremely rude and often hung up on me. When I asked, and I do ask this question each time, whether Roselle is aware of West Orange's noise ordinance, I'm either told that they are not aware of it, or think that the noise ordinance allows them to begin pickup at 6:00 a.m. rather than 6:30 a.m. Though I'm grateful to the Police Department, the Health Department, and the mayor for their attempts to address the problem, none of their efforts have thus far been effective in correcting the problem that has been documented since 2007. On July 21st, 2014, I had, I had emailed the mayor about another early pickup and asked whether Roselle was ever fined by the police. On July 22nd, Michael Fonsino responded, quote, "The township does not intend on issuing summons to our contractor and would rather make sure they adhere to this condition in our contract. Please contact me directly if this problem persists, and we will handle it accordingly," quote, end. I took that to mean that I should no longer contact the police and hence stopped. However, when I spoke with Mr. Fonsino last Friday, he told me that he talked with Chief of Police, James Abbott, and they now want to start ticketing Roselle's drivers when a complaint comes in, since the drivers supposedly do not do what they are being told. My response to Mr. Fonsino was that this new arrangement misses the essential point of the problem. It is Roselle which employs the drivers. The record shows that Roselle is neither able to properly instruct and discipline its drivers, nor able to hire competent drivers if the incompetent ones cannot be instructed. As a resident of West Orange, I find it unacceptable that a portion of my property taxes is used to pay for contractors who since nearly a decade continuously violate the township's noise ordinance with impunity. My family has lost and continues to lose countless hours of sleep because of the early garbage pickup by Roselle. Noise pollution is a health concern, and hence a quality of life issue that the town needs to address. It seems to me that Roselle is playing the administration and the residents of this town for fools. Last week on Tuesday, garbage was picked up at 5:45 a.m. I called Roselle, but despite my complaint, Friday's garbage was also picked up at 5:45. I would like to close by asking the council the following three questions and making a final remark. First, is it the Police Department or the Health Department or both of them who are obligated to enforce the town's noise ordinance? Second, given my repeated complaints, has Roselle ever been fined as outlined in the ordinance? If so, when was it fined and what was the fine? And if Roselle has not been fined, why not? Third, what steps will the council take to once and for all end Roselle's continuing violation of West Orange's noise ordinance? Finally, I would like to ask the council to ensure that Roselle, in order to address this problem, does not simply shift the early pickup route to a different part of West Orange's community. Not only would the company be still in violation of the noise ordinance, but it would mean that other residents of this town would be subjected to the same ordeal that I have documented and outlined in my remarks. I thank you for listening, and I'm looking forward to your responses.
Thank you, Dr. Una. I will address the, the administration will address the questions after we're done with the public.
Yes, yes, thank you.
Appreciate your patience for coming out today. Any other member of the public? Mark?
Hi, Mark Meyerowitz, 19 Howell Drive. I just want to say how I have a new appreciation for the recycling center, as I've been cleaning out with, with my wife and her family, my in-laws' house, and out in Long Island, and there are like no recycling centers out there. We found one open in Roslyn, I think, only on Sunday, and it was a bit of a schlep. So it was nice to, you know, you know, as, as I was bringing the recycling out there, I was thinking, what a, what a pleasure, what a luxury we have in West Orange, that you can bring computers and electronics and tires and metal and bottles and newspapers and everything, all, all that, you know, whenever you want, basically, except on Sunday. So it is a great facility, and I know there's fire problems and smell problems, but we should appreciate what we have. I would appreciate, talking about appreciation, if you would, the town council meetings are supposed to start at 7:00, right? Isn't that what it's supposed to?
Regular me, the public meeting, yes.
Okay, because I, I rushed to get here for 7:00, and, you know, it's, it's a bit of a pain. And then this tonight and other nights doesn't start till 7:45. So either post the time at 7:30, or, you know, at 5, when my 5 minutes is up, I'm gonna get the clock buzzing. Mr. President, you may want to, at 5, at 7:00, just say, okay, this discussion is over, and we're moving on, because that would show deference to the public. Now, the real thing I'm concerned about is the, the budget and the rise in taxes. And I see on tonight's agenda, you are going to try and bust the 2% cap in order to promote the health, safety, and welfare of the citizens. But I, I don't see how taxing the citizens even more is going to help their health, their safety, or their welfare. It's going to hurt their health, their safety, and their welfare, for the simple reason that where are we supposed to get the money? To pay the higher taxes? You know, seriously, where, where are people, there are thousands and thousands of homes on fixed income in West Orange. Where are they supposed to get the money? They don't have government jobs. They don't have businesses that can raise prices so easily. So, you know, what's, what's the taxpayer supposed to do? Where do you think the money is going to come from? You know, it's springtime, people want to fix up their houses. They're not gonna be able to fix up their houses. You're taking hundreds of dollars a year out of people's pockets, you know? I don't want to call you pickpockets, but basically, you have the legal right to do that, and you're doing that right. And now you want to spend even more than the 2%. So where do you expect us to get the money from? You know, should we, maybe we'll start growing medical marijuana in our backyards. That's pretty lucrative. Are you planning on giving any more tax breaks to developers? The downtown redevelopment, you're all praising yourselves now, but that's a 30-year tax break for the redeveloper, and that's going to be coming out of the pockets of everyone else in town to cover that expense. Do you have any more redevelopment plans? I, I know there's one or two that you've already proposed, but are there any more redevelopment plans? Are you going to be giving other tax breaks to other entities? So while you're raising our taxes, the taxes of the, you know, the little schmo's in town, the little people, are you going to be giving other entities tax breaks? And I have read that there are towns now that are actually cutting spending. I just thought of that. I don't know the names of any towns. I read it on Facebook, so it must be true. That there are towns that are actually cutting their spending. And that's what you should be looking to doing now. People are not getting richer. Our houses are not climbing in great value. You know, there's no social security increase. Businesses are struggling. I mean, you see that in the, in West Orange and downtown. I mean, if, if the economy were booming, downtown would be bustling a little more. And I know you're working hard to change that, but part of the problem is it's a struggling economy. And you can't expect every year to go into the pockets of the taxpayers who are not earning more money and who are struggling to break even. So I really want to know, I want you to, tonight, to tell, you know, a 75-year-old couple living in West Orange, where do you expect them, where, where they should get the money from? Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Meyerowitz. I don't know whose hand went off first. You want to go first? All right, it's you. It's all you.
Rosary Morelli, Ralph Road. Now, honest to God, I really didn't want to be here tonight, and it's all your fault that I'm here. All you. Okay, and I also have to tell you that Mark and I are always on the same wavelength. We do talk, but generally, politics. And I think he's a very intelligent man, and the subject he's talked, he just spoke about. I never talked to him about it, and I'm gonna speak about it. So great minds run through the same channels. So I am as smart as Mark is. How does that sound? You were just on my good side outside. Okay, remember, love-hate. People keep reminding me about that. Okay, this ordinance is 2479-16, and the ordinance is calendar year 2016, ordinance to exceed the municipal budget appropriation limits and to establish a cap bank. Now, if I understand this, we're talking about a 2% cap. And I saw this at the last minute, so I can't even write, read this stuff, most of it. And in that cap, you don't have debt service and you don't have benefits. We know the benefits are out of sight. So how come, under the cap, we are going to exceed it? I think I know, I think you're running a very bad business. You need more business training. Right? Okay, so am I right, you'll have to answer me later, that under the cap, you have debt service, you have benefits, benefits are out of sight, 2% increase, doesn't include those, so what happens? In good business, it's good business sense and practice to cut spending when your costs go up. Because in the future, if you go into debt, in the future, you have to pay debt, and you're gonna incur more expenses, inflation comes into play, so then you're struggling, so then what happens? God bless you. So now, in a government, you go back to the people. You have an ATM machine, you go back to the taxpayer. So that's what's happening here. You're exceeding the cap, that's going up. Obviously, out of the cap, that's going up. You have a school budget. And Mark's talking about poor people. Well, the poor seniors did not get a cost of living increase 2016. But in the township, if you're living here and paying taxes, have a house, you have a store bill that's gone up, as well as your property taxes have the potential of going up. Now, the other thing you do, well, the thing you do do is cut your cost and cut your expenses. I was invited to go to the meeting about Gregory School the other night. Ms. Castellino ran the meeting, and I was happy to be there. I'm kind of meetinged out. But my feeling is, a project like that is something that should be looked at very closely. My take, and I could be all wrong, there were two factions there, those for it and those not for it. It appeared to me as though you had the people who are living with the problem on their street now will be getting rid of it, and it'll be moved east to Gregory Avenue. So maybe that's an expense that, $375,000, that might be put aside and looked at more intensely, more deeply. Maybe it doesn't need to happen, or maybe there's another way to do it. There are a lot of things that went on in the township, and I'm not going to enumerate them. I think Mr. Krokowiac really explained them and went into them very well. I know in your own home budget, and for those of you who have small businesses, you wouldn't run them the way you do this. There are those things that you have to have, you can't control those kinds of costs, and there are those things you would like to have. And there are those things that maybe you might need, but you really need to look into them, you need to study them. It's good business practice and find a cheaper and more economical way to do it. The taxpayers can't be burdened anymore with tax increases. Seniors moving out of town or dying and leaving houses are not being bought by other seniors. So you're using, you're losing a revenue resource when seniors live in the township, pay their property taxes, don't have kids in the school, and like me, I haven't had children in the school since 1978. But you need people like me. We get a senior bus, but we're gonna get more senior transportation, right, Jack?
Yes, we are.
Okay. You like that? See, when you get old, you can come to those parties all the time. I have to tell you, the parties are getting smaller and smaller.
Your time is up.
You're having such a good time, Karen, you're gonna have to stop talking. Well, that's the end of my tale of woe. Thank you for listening.
Appreciate it. Thank you for your time. Yes.
Mary El Clemmensen, Cherrywood Circle. First thing I wanted to ask about is if it would be possible for us to request Teresa De novo in the Health Department to give some sort of presentation on the water quality for the residents of West Orange. I know you're working on the school district, but I know that some of us residents are kind of concerned, too. It'd be nice to know where we are. We've read a few things, it's not about the lead necessarily, but there's certain other items that are in the water supply in, I think it's Maplewood and South Orange. And it'd be nice to know how, how we're faring. If, if we could do that, it'd be super to hear about it. My, the rest of my comments have to do with our budget process, and of course, we're not really going to raise taxes by the amount that the administration requests, I hope. And we do have plenty of time to hopefully discuss this. I see that we're gonna have a public budget meeting scheduled for May 3rd, so hopefully, there's more time to get people involved with that. But I did want to point out that I did sit in on the budget hearing a few Saturdays ago, late February, and it was an eight-hour, I'm not gonna say ordeal, it was just eight hours of discussion by department managers and the town council, listening thoughtfully. And I just wanted to point out a couple of things. All right, first of all, the budget right now is at $79 million. That's actually up $4.6 million compared to the actual spend in 2015. That's a percentage increase of 6.3%. And it also is up from 70.7 million in 2013, which is a 11% increase in a three-year time period. That's equivalent to $9 million. I wanted to just point out, I didn't have a chance to, to really go through this thoroughly. I was hoping to be able to sit down with some members of the community and, and do something more thoughtful. But just a few quick line items pop out. First of all, there's lots of placeholders there for items. This is from the budget, what I'm, what I'm hearing in the budget hearing. Lots of placeholders, so you've got line items that exist, and you can see that the same amount is placed there for one year, and it matches the year before, but it wasn't actually spent. So what I'm thinking is, why don't we just vacuum all of those out and, and give it to the administration to redeploy elsewhere? Health insurance for retirees. I'm wondering if we can't do the same thing that we heard in the news recently that the school district is recommending to allow those benefits to be paid by another, I don't know who, but somebody else in the, in the state, I think. And I'm wondering if that also would be possible for the township retirees. The Commission on Health Insurance, I think we finally got down in the last year to what that number is. I can't remember if it's 4% or 7%, but it's kind of, and I'm wondering if we can't negotiate that commission down a little bit. There's a whole issue of the surpluses policy. You know, I, I heard Mr. Gross say that we had a $3.5 million surplus right now, of which we're gonna apply $2 million to, to this current budget. The policy issue, which has never really been finalized here, I believe, is that the council has some wherewithal to set a surplus policy. And the usage of that is pretty important when we get into these years, these, these years now, where we were being very careful in the last five years, and now we're kind of slipping a little bit, I think. Zero-based budgeting, I know I've mentioned it before and some other people. You know, if we're moving into years where the budget is going to be tight, then I think that it behooves us to think about departments- then I think that it behooves us to think about departments creating budgets from scratch, basically, being able to say why they want every line item, as opposed to just come in with the year before and kind of go from there. Other line items, in no particular order, that I would either point out as being kind of large within the budget or show a huge increase would include waste management, the whole health insurance scheme. I'm kind of wondering about this whole JIF idea. I noticed that employee hospitalizations were up a lot. And I'm not an insurance expert, but the idea of being in a pool, a larger pool, doesn't that eliminate, doesn't that keep a, you know, a rap on your premium? So, now our premiums are going to go up because the hospitalization rate is up, I guess. And I'm just thinking, well, that's why you should belong in a larger pool to begin with. Fire hydrants, that's a $650,000 item. It didn't go up a lot, it's just that it's a large item, and I'm wondering if there isn't a maybe better way to maintain those year after year. The parks and playground and pools budget is 1.1 million. If you put everything together, the pools and community stuff, I'm just wondering if every item is really justified in that. I really don't know. Electric rates are really high, and also fuel.
Your time is up.
So, this is a year where, you know, fuel rates were lower, and it's beyond me why they'd be up so much. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Clemmison. And I'll ask that we discuss and clarify some of those numbers, which, based on what's presented to us, they're way off. So, we need to understand that better. So, I would ask for that after we're done with remarks. Anyone else? Yes, sir.
Steve Conowich.
Can you state your address, please?
Kind of transit, Virgin Islands here, I guess. I was just wondering, how come West Orange doesn't have a shelter?
Shelter?
This past winter, I happened to see two people sleeping behind the Pizza Hut, I mean, pizza place. And it was 5 degrees, and I asked the police officer, could you go check on them? And the next day, I asked these two guys, you know, if they came and checked on them. They said, no. And I was just wondering, every other town has one. I just was wondering, you know, do you have a Red Cross building here, or if something happens? I don't know. I know Milburn has one. So, and then, the other thing, I know you're talking about money and stuff, and I was just wondering, you know, is it possible to do a triathlon around the reservoir? Like, run, bike, and swim for some money to raise for the library? So, that's all I want to say. Thank you.
Thank you, Steve. Yes, Anthony. How's that leg completely healed?
Never been better. Running, I'd never run. Hi, Anthony Puglisi, representing County Executive D. Fincenzo. First, I want to address a couple of questions by the gentleman who came up before me. He has been speaking about homeless and shelters. The county has a Code Blue policy that when the temperature drops below 15 degrees, we have a series of partners around the county that open their doors free of charge to anyone who would like shelter. And all they need to do is, obviously, if they have access to a smartphone or phone, they can go online. Also, if they, they can call 211 to get a list of the phone, the shelter locations. And basically, it's free of charge for the people who need shelter for that night. So, that's, addresses one question. He also raised a question about an event at the Orange Reservoir. That's a county facility. All you need to do, if you want to have an event there, is call our permit office, which is 973-735-6229. And they can walk you through the process of doing an event around that facility. And we already have a lot of organizations that have utilized that. Susan Coleman has a big race there. Muscular dystrophy association has a large race there. So, it's, it is open, and it is used by various organizations for events like that. Now, just be very brief about some other things. I had mentioned cherry blossoms. Hopefully, winter weather is behind us, and hopefully, the cherry blossoms cooperate and bloom on time. So, we have events that run from April 9th to April 24th, which is a bike race, a 10K run, a one-mile fun run and walk, followed by a family day. And then, finally, on the 24th is our community festival, which is the Bloom Fest. And throughout that whole time, we do have tours of Branchburg Park. We are still predicting the blossoming to coincide with our festival, so it's 9th to the 24th. However, if you look outside, probably within a week, you may see some blooming here and there. So, we invite everyone to come down. It's a great spectacular display of color in Branchburg Park. And then, finally, just wanted to bring you up to date, up to speed about what's happening at Turtleback Zoo. We did receive, two giraffes did arrive. We have a third on the way. The two giraffes that are in the facility now, they're in quote-unquote "quarantine time." According to AZA regulations, they need 30 days to get used to their surroundings. So, right now, they're not in public view, but we anticipate mid-April that the exhibit will be open. In addition to those giraffes, I just found out today, we have a fourth on the way. I'm not sure when that's arriving. In addition to the giraffes, there are elands, tortoises, ostriches, and the fourth animal, which I forgot, that are also part of that exhibit. So, when you go to the African Adventure, you won't just see giraffes, but you'll see a whole habitat of, a whole African habitat. In addition, later this year, I don't know if it's got to the planning board yet, but we are going to replace our tortistry building with a sea turtle recovery center. The only sea turtle recovery centers currently are located in New England and down in the Carolinas. And each year, there are hundreds of sea turtles that either get caught in nets or injured by boats and other natural elements. So, those turtles will be rescued. We are working with a group called Sea Turtle Recovery. Those turtles we brought to our facility when it opens, and they'll be nursed back to health and then re-sent out into the wild. So, it's a great project for Turtleback Zoo because we are saving our namesake with turtles. Also onboard for mid-April opening is the new Zoo Cafe. Like I've mentioned, the attendance at Turtleback Zoo has really blossomed. We welcomed over 755,000 people last year. So, this winter, our cafe was closed, and a large portion, portion of it was torn down and replaced with a two-story addition. So, we'll be able to accommodate larger crowds. That's all I have right now. Thank you.
Anthony, did you talk, talk about the Cherry Blossom Festival?
I did.
You did? Can you highlight the historic park tours?
Oh, yeah.
Talk a little bit about that, because I haven't, I hadn't seen that before.
Okay, so, this is something that we've done the last couple of years, from April 17th to April 23rd. There's only four times per day, 11, 12, 1, and 2. We'll have a bus that will take people on a tour through the park. And as you go through the park, it's a guided tour, so somewhat knowledgeable member of our park staff will point out historical sites within the park. They'll talk about horticulture. They'll talk about the importance of cherry blossom trees. The tour starts from the cherry, starts and ends at the Cherry Blossom Welcome Center, which is near the Mill Street entrance. There is a $5 fee. It's on a first-come, first-served basis. They do make arrangements, if you have groups, so that you may be able to get an additional time rather than the ones listed here. And then, if you don't want to take the bus tour, there's also a cellphone tour. And there are 72 stops within the park. And all you need to do is either call in and press the number of the station you're at, or if you have a scanning device on your phone, there's a barcode at each of the stops. You can just wave your phone over the barcode, and then you'll get a recorded message about, again, the horticulture, the history, and other events that have happened in the park.
Wow, that's very creative and progressive.
Yes.
Thank you very much.
I want to say thank you for the information on the shelters. I know West Orange has heating and cooling stations that are announced, too. So, thank you for that information. And I read recently how Barnegat is, when you mentioned about the turtles, no, that hasn't come before the planning board yet. But I did see where Barnegat is collecting all of the crab cages that have been separated from the buoy that they were attached to, and they're cleaning up Barnegat Bay, collecting these because endangering a lot of animals and a lot of turtles and other wildlife that's trapped in there. So, if you're saying that you will have this rescue, is that something you could look into, this organism? Sorry, I don't know the full name, but it was something about Barnegat Bay. Just reading in the paper a week or two ago.
Okay.
Thanks. Stay a little bit local, more local.
Yeah.
Thanks.
Thank you, Anthony. Anyone else wish to address the council? Yes, Jerry, Mr. Evans.
Good evening, Jerry Evans, 26 Walker Road. Two weeks ago, with the supporters of the library lined up to speak on the importance of proper funding of this great institution or community, I had to forego speaking before you. In retrospect, I'm glad that I did, because I think you saw and heard some extremely passionate citizens, including some middle schoolers, speak about their library. As you all know, I've spoken before this board or this council about solving problems. And as an architect for over 35 years, I'm trained to solve those problems in creative ways. And I'm well-qualified to offer my opinion when it comes to architecture and planning. As our representatives, we trust in you to solve some of the many problems that are presented by the citizens and by the government here. And the, and that's the reason why we vote for you and put you in these leadership positions as councilmembers of the council. This evening, I was going to bring two problems to the council, but it seems that you guys have already solved one. The water quality in the schools. The fact that we have three schools over 100 years old and two middle schools that are about 80 years old. And I think Jack is correct, to the point that it's not the water from the water company, it's the old pipes in the old building. So, my only, my only comment on that would be that you would, you know, keep on top of the board education. I don't go to the board education meetings. I only come to these meetings, and I would just like to know that it's being taken care of. All right? The second, so you solved one problem already. You don't even have to answer anything about that, and I'm appreciative. The second one is, has to do with the Gregory School. I attended a public meeting organized by Councilwoman Castellino last week about the proposed parking lot expansion, the so-called school bus drop-off driveway. And as an architect, and as a planner, and also as a past co-PTA president and a 40-year neighbor of the school, that my children and my daughter-in-law attended, I must say that the bus drop-off, drop-off part of this project is not a solution to a problem that, I agree, has existed for a long time. I provided a sketch that showed what will happen if the project should be approved with this school drop-off, school bus drop-off driveway or roadway. Here are some of the items that will happen. The removal of four old growth trees and beautiful trees at that. Most of, most of what I would call the grassy knoll in the front would be destroyed, including two pedestrian approaches from Gregory Avenue. The flagpole would go, which I don't think is allowed under our government. I think you have to have a flagpole in every school. The school sign would go. The two-year-old Century Plaza that the PTA worked so hard to raise the money to construct would go. And despite these items, there would be a need to construct a retaining wall the length of the new roadway that would require a chain-link fence on top of it, because the low side would be beyond the code of where you don't have to put a fence on. The construction of more, of two more curb cuts for ingress and egress, with the egress close to the corner of the, the corner, that the crossing guard would need another set of eyes to keep doing the great job that she's been doing in keeping these children safe. And finally, I don't think anybody has considered, what I considered and what I talked about at the meeting, that this roadway would do to the classic front elevation of this beautiful building for the amount of, and also the amount of water, snow, water, that would spill out onto Gregory Avenue in a similar fashion that the county has allowed to spill out onto Cherry Lane in heavy rainstorms. So, as an architect, I like when clients want to construct capital projects, because then there's a job for me as an architect. But the expenditure of upwards of, and I'll correct Rosary, it's $357,000 for something that would do so much damage to the neighborhood needs to be studied a little bit closer before you even go further on these plans. There are better ways to solve this problem. There are creative ways to solve the problem. We've talked about this for over the years, but for some reason, it doesn't get done. And I would strongly suggest that before you spend this kind of money, that you look to solve the problem of the school bus drop-off, and you look to solve the problem of the parking lot. Otherwise, you're going to be creating a bigger, a bigger problem. And as far as Rosary and Mark talked about taxes, I don't mind paying taxes if I'm getting the services. And I know that sounds odd, but I have to tell you that I haven't had my street cleaned in about six months. And I don't know whether the street cleaners don't do that work in the wintertime. Maybe Jack can tell me that, or whether they're broken, and we don't have the money to pay for the parts to fix them. But my street is filthy, and I'm sure other streets are filthy. So, I don't mind paying taxes if we get the services. So, I would like some clarification as to when the street sweeper is going to come around again. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Mr. Evans. Anyone else from the public? You already went, ma'am.
I only have two questions. Do you want to talk of a different topic?
No, that was it, five minutes.
Yeah.
You can email us, please. That would be terrific. Anyone else? Seeing none, we'll close our public comment. I will ask two questions of the administration. Number one, Ms. Dr. Una's requests, requested questions or outline on the garbage pickup in regards to the noise ordinance. The handout is, is there. And then, the second question is, those were the budgetary questions. Number one, ordinance 2476-16, why is it 3.5% when the introduced budget is 2%? Just explain that. And the second part of the budget question was the Ms. Clemmison's math in regards to the increase and why a resident would see the budget from that perspective. A 6% increase as opposed to a 2% increase, which the, the introduced budget has, has included. So, those are, those are the questions. I don't know if you want to answer them now, or wait?
I will, I can address the questions on Shepherd Terrace, and I think Mr. Gross and I can both address the questions on the budget.
Terrific.
I'd like us to do that now.
That'll be great.
One of, excuse me. One of the questions was, who enforces the noise ordinance? That would be the police department. If there is a, usually, nine out of 10 times, if there is a problem with noise, depending upon what it is, the police department can issue the summons. It can also be issued by the Health Department, but it's usually issued by the police department. The second question was, have we issued Mr. Roselli any summonses? I don't know the answer to that question, but I can find that out tomorrow and find out if there's ever been any summonses issued to our garbage pickup, our garbage pickup contract. And I believe the third question was, has Mr. Roselli been spoken to regarding, you know, not picking up garbage at these specific times? I believe that has happened. I'm not so sure why it doesn't continue to happen. But I can tell you, this is the first, today was the first day I've heard about this complaint, and I've kind of done a little research during the day. And we're going to do what we have to do to make sure that, hopefully, we can stop that from happening. I'm not sure exactly what that plan will be, because I don't, I don't believe, and I'm not so sure what Michael Fonzino's answer was, but I don't believe summonzing them is the, is the answer. The answer is to getting them to stop doing what they're doing. And that's obviously our problem. They're our vendor, so we should be able to sit down and talk with them and, and explain to them, you know, we don't want this happening anymore. So, that is something I can tell you I would put on my agenda. So, that is something I can tell you I will put on my agenda and hopefully have resolved pretty quickly.
And so, the ordinance is 6:30 a.m.
6:30 a.m.
And so, and that's applicable to this contract?
That's correct. It's applicable to any noise.
Okay. And no exceptions with respect to commercial establishments? I know that you go to certain areas.
I mean, Mr. Kizer has the ordinance pulled up. I don't believe there are any exceptions for commercial, for commercial properties, but I'm not sure, to be quite honest with you. I know for residential, it's definitely 6:30 pickup.
Okay.
Quite honestly, the issue is not the ordinance. The issue, Roselli is our contractor. So, it's more a matter of contract and a matter of an agreement between us. It's got nothing to do with the ordinance.
Yeah. No, because we're make, we're validating that it is happening.
I mean, the ordinance should be enforced. Don't get me wrong.
I'm just talking in general terms.
But what Mr. Kizer's saying is true. I need to sit down, obviously, bring them in and sit down with them.
Well, I appreciate that.
And say, hey, you know, what's going on here? We need to stop doing this.
Okay, so we'll be doing some further research on that. Councilwoman, do you have a question on this issue?
Yeah, thank you. Just getting back to the contract itself, is there provision in the contract that?
I'm not sure. I didn't get a chance to review the contract today, but I will be looking at this starting first thing tomorrow morning.
Okay.
I did have a few conversations with Mr. Fonzino and Ms. DeNoebo today prior to the meeting when I got these emails and I'm putting together a game plan.
So, all my years dealing with busing issues on the school port, there should be, there should be a provision in the contract.
It's the same thing, you know. I mean, we, you know from being on the board, what a complaint, that was, that, you know, the buses were coming too early, in or too out, you know. With all due respect to everything that we do, it's, it becomes, this town is a little bit different, and it's because it's so large. So, that when you have garbage pickup for one zone once a week and you have to go all over town to do it, obviously, they're going to try and start early so they make sure they get everything done. But that doesn't help the residents or the citizens who obviously have to suffer from the wrath of them being there early and they don't want to hear the garbage trucks in front of their house at 6:30. So, that's an issue that I need to sit down with the Roselli Company and talk to them about and hopefully get resolved quickly.
Well, yeah, I appreciate that. And I got to tell you, like, in the summer, 5:30 in the morning, it feels like it's daylight. I mean, Perry was just talking about getting up at four in the morning. Like, I'm up early and I can see how garbage pickup could take place that early, if allowed, but it just so happens that our ordinance is 6:30. So, we have to find some common ground.
The ordinance is what it is, and obviously, it affects people differently.
Right. So, our neighborhoods are different than ours.
That's absolutely correct.
Okay, so thank you for the follow-up. And then, so now, we're going to move on to the budget questions.
Okay. There's a lot to cover. I'll try, we did spend, you know, a good, better part of eight hours here Saturday, and a lot of the things that were discussed here today were discussed in detail Saturday. I'm going to try to touch on just some of the points. First off, number one, the ordinance that's on for tonight, which is the three and a half percent cap ordinance, that's a, what I've always termed a housekeeping ordinance. We do it every single year. It really has, does, in of itself, does not impact the taxes. It's a spending cap. There are certain categories within municipal law, certain categories of the budget, that have a spending cap. And this year, that cap happens to be zero percent. But it allows a municipality to pass an ordinance to go over that zero percent if, you know, if it adopts the ordinance. And the municipality then has the right to either use those funds that year or bank them. We have done this every year in order to bank whenever necessary. For, in this particular year's budget, we actually will need this increase in order to cover our appropriation side. But that has nothing to do with taxes. The budget that is being presented to the council this evening, or has been presented to the council at the last hearing for introduction this evening, is, shows a two percent increase in taxes, exactly. Now, more or no less. So, you know, we, in order to get there, one of the things that was discussed was the issue of surplus and a surplus policy. And I can tell you, and we've just, again, we've discussed this before, that the administration has had historically a policy of utilizing as much surplus as we generate in the previous year, so that we're constantly rotating the surplus. In order to get this budget to two percent, as we discussed last Saturday, we're looking at probably an additional $2 million of surplus that will be impacted by this year's budget. So, this discussion of surplus is particularly important as we move forward and how we're going to, what we'll do over the next year to try to recoup some of that. Just a few other things that were mentioned, you know, the, this year, we have health benefits increased that were dramatic. Even with that increase, we're lower than state health benefits plan. And if there's another agency out there that's wanting to pay that for us, we'll be happy to do that, to accept the payments as indicated. But I'm not aware of that. I am aware of a plan by the state that to make some, save, some quote-unquote savings in health benefits so that they can then pass that cost of the teachers onto the local municipality, which is different than is, that's, that's one of the plans that's in there. So, it's just the opposite. They're not, as far as I know, they're not looking to take money or burdens away from us. It looks like the state's looking to put burdens on top of us. And some of the other numbers, again, I'm not quite sure. We've heard some numbers, fuel, for instance, we're down 300,000 this year over last year. You know, again, we, I don't want to go through the entire budget.
No, I understand.
But, you know, there are a lot, there are a lot of things, and part of this is we're doing this verbally and not necessarily in writing. I'd be happy to sit with anybody at any time to go over some of this with them, but we've, you and the council has done, and the mayor has done a lot of work, and quite frankly, so has staff. Just one more thing, this issue of zero-based budgeting. What you see, what you all see at the hearing is the end product of many, many hours that we sit down with each individual department head, which I personally review five years of purchases in each of their departments to come up with the budgets that we present to you as a percent. So, we do a granular presentation, and, which takes, literally takes weeks. So, we couldn't do that with council on a Saturday, on a Saturday day, but it is done. So, I'm going to end there. I think, you know, I tried to touch a number of the things that were said. I'd be happy to, happy to answer additional or meet with anyone that would like.
I just want to add one more point. One of our residents spoke about additional revenues, and I see that the resolution, filing tax appeals on commercial establishments may result, if we are successful in those tax appeals, may result in additional revenue from the commercial sector. So, I don't know if you want to talk about that as well, but we are looking into additional options. One of them being appealing the assessments on commercial establishments so that we, meaning that we, at the end, the end result may be an additional commercial tax revenue if we're successful in tax court. So, I don't know if you want to talk about it.
That's correct, Council President. That is an issue that, you know, we are going to be discussing over the next couple of weeks with regard to filing tax appeals against commercial properties that we think are, are not paying enough taxes. And if we win the appeal, then they have to pay more taxes. The second issue I just wanted to touch on, I think Mr. Gross touched on everything else, is one of the residents spoke about, you know, additional monies that are in the budget that aren't spent year by year. Just like anything else, you have to have contingencies in your budget. Like, for instance, there's a line item in my budget for, for medical exams. Some years, I don't spend that money at all. Other years, I have to send people for fitness for duty exams, and I may spend it, I might have ten employees that I have to send it for. But I have to leave that money in the budget because I need that contingency there just in case that happens. So, it's not like you can just go to every line item and say, okay, we didn't spend $40 here, let's take that out. We leave it in there for the contingency so that at the end of the year, we don't have to come back in here and say, hey, we have to adjust the budget. We need another $300,000 because we had to spend money that we took out that we should have probably left in the budget. So, there are a lot of items in the budget that are like that, but it's like that because it's money for the contingencies that we're used to dealing with. And like I said, there may be a year come by, you may not spend any of that money. But, and I use the example of the, you know, fitness for duty exams in my budget. There's some years I may do ten or twelve of those. There's other years I might only do two. But the amount of money has to stay in there because if you need to do it, you have to get it done. And then, we'd become, I'd back to the council and saying, hey, we have to increase the budget by X.
Yeah.
So, we try to balance all that out with regard to, you know, what we're doing.
Well, thank you, Mr. Sayers, and thank you to the administration for addressing the budgetary questions that came up. Do any of my colleagues have questions on the issue of taxes, of the budget?
Just maybe explain the contractual obligations that have to be met.
You know, that's a good point, you know. And, you know, people say, well, you know, you're up X amount of dollars. If you look at this budget, as we all sat through the eight hours of that hearing, painstakingly as it was, every one of the increases we have in this budget are not controllable, were not controllable, I should say. None of them had to do, and trust me, I'm not trying to blow our own horns, but the bottom line is, none of the increases in this budget had anything to do with anything we had control of. They were increases in medical costs because of, obviously, problems that our employees had. And when you have people who have bigger medical problems, your insurance premium goes up. As Mr. Gross said, we shopped that for private companies and the New Jersey State Health Benefit Plan. If, in fact, we went into that plan, it would have been $718,000 more than we're paying now. The other issues that brought this budget up are increases in police and fire pensions, increase in our PERS pensions, increase in salary and wages based on contractual negotiations, which, believe it or not, went up, but we didn't go up much. We had a 0022. That's, that's kind of like unheard of in New Jersey, but now we're in the year where we got to pay the 22. So, we budget, we had a budget to two percent. Social Security taxes went up. So, everything that went up in this budget went up, not because of any control we had over it, unless, unless you want to turn around and say, okay, let's lay off 25 employees and we won't have to pay the additional money. And personally, I think we're down to bare minimum trying to get done what we're getting done in town now. So, that would not be our recommendation. And obviously, the budget we presented to you didn't give you that, right? We didn't want to make that recommendation. What we did do, though, was, as you know, there were people who retired seventeen jobs that we did not, were not going to fill, and we took those out of the budget. So, through attrition, we're reducing the workforce and trying to cut the spending, but unfortunately, there's certain things in this budget that you can't control. It's like your household budget. When PSE and G wants to raise your, your gas and electric bill, they raise it. When New Jersey, when, you know, Verizon wants to raise your telephone bill, they raise it. When you go out on Saturday or Sunday to go to the shop, right, and your food bill goes up by $100, you have no control over that.
So, the, so it's fifteen, is it fifteen or seventeen now, jobs through attrition?
Seventeen, I believe, wasn't it? Between full-time and part-time, I think it was seventeen.
Between full-time and part-time, so yes. So, we're looking, you know, on the question of shaving down the budget, that's, that's a perspective that we need to address, and this is only one of the years. And our town employees do a terrific job, and slowly, we've been trying to consolidate and doing more with less personnel. And the public today also gave a perfect example of the contrast. On one end, you have residents talking about, you know, how we need to cut on spending, looking out after the taxpayer. And then, the other end, we had, you know, conversations about the funding, the library at a higher level, shelters, St. Mark's Church, et cetera. So, you see the kind of struggle that we're faced with during this budget season. One last question for the administration, and the councilwoman brought it to my attention, is the issue of the street sweeping. And Walker Road was one question.
I'll check on that. I'm not so sure why that happened. I mean, I know we did have, one of our street sweepers was down for a while. I believe it's fixed now, or is it back up? I'm not sure if it's done yet, but I, we usually have two street sweepers and we stay on a schedule around the township. I can't believe that the street hasn't been done in six months, but I can check on that and I can check our records in DPW.
Thank you very much. Mr. Evans, just let us know if you don't see any improvement in the scheduling.
I prefer one of them.
Okay? Thank you again. Councilwoman McCartney?
Thank you. I wanted to start with Dr. Una because as soon as we did receive this email about the noise, and you asked, they are well aware because it didn't just happen in your neighborhood, it has happened in other neighborhoods, and it has been brought to their attention. So, when we did receive this, this email, I immediately contacted the health director. She said that they were notified. And I was even in town hall and spoke to Mr. Fonzino, and he assured me that they had already been contacted. So, I think from there and the mayor, that they believed it would have been resolved. So, this is so unfortunate that you have to still come to a council meeting and, and read this, and it is not resolved. So, I'm glad that the business administrator will make the effort to meet with them to, because it seems what happens is that it just gets displaced. So, if they complain in one neighborhood, then it moves to a different neighborhood, and it just has to be stopped altogether. So, sorry that you had to come out, but I think everything's moving in the right direction, hopefully. Questions on the budget? I believe the administration answered questions on the budget. I think I like that idea of community meeting. And Mark just walked out, but I would have liked to have seen the article he talked about other municipalities cutting spending. If he can find it, I'd like to see what.
The one I read this weekend was how every other municipality was going up.
Pretty much, right.
I think I read the wrong newspaper.
So, that's why I would like to see what he found. And the other comments about the Gregory Avenue, because I too, as a Gregory mom, was at the meeting, and I pre, I don't know if Jerry Evans left early, but it, no, no, I don't mean that you left here, but I don't know if you left that meeting early because I think, I want to say that Michelle moderated an excellent meeting. And even in the, even the engineer, who I've known for many, many years, who worked on the planning board, so many applications, he was so receptive, and, and I really did appreciate that. And what I, even the comments that Mrs. Morelli made, it did seem polarized because the people on Lowell were on one side of the table, but they were familiar faces, and the residents on Gregory were on the other side. It seemed polarized, but I didn't get that impression that it seemed like everyone was working toward, toward a solution, as Jerry mentioned. Jerry made really excellent, even with your trace paper and the comments that you made, that they were all taken into consideration. So, this was so, I feel like it was so preliminary that they admitted that it was a conceptual plan just to hear from the public, and the engineer did say that they would be revised. The grade, I was a little stunned, too. The retaining wall, chain-link fence, it's not what we want to see. The grade can change from the aerial, the other comments that were made, that from the aerial that they were working from, the Centennial Plaza was not in that view. So, definitely be a closer look. And at, toward the end of the meeting, talking about revising the whole plan to take everything that everyone was talking about into consideration. The part, and I do believe getting the buses off the road will be helpful. What didn't come out is on Lowell Avenue, because that's where all the buses are and that's where so much of the parking is, there is a proposed kiss-and-go lane there, too. So, if parents get in the habit of just pulling up, dropping off, kiss and go, just like they do at Redwood and Pleasantale, it just makes for the traffic to flow as opposed to having the red, parents parked in other people's driveways, in front of their driveways where they can't get out. That has to be eliminated. So, we want to look at this plan and appreciate the comments that, that came out of that meeting and the considerations that the engineer took, we'll take into consideration.
Thank you very much, and I see that, I know that Ms. Morelli talked about further evaluating, that this Gregory project needs further evaluation and assessment, and everybody seems to be really involved, from residents, professionals in our community to council members. So, it's refreshing to see that. Councilman?
Sorry, in that way, I got to put my questions together.
Oh, no problem. He yields the floor.
I yield the floor.
Councilman Koviac?
Thank you, Council President. When I first read Dr. Una's email thread that goes back to 2013, and as she mentioned, goes back to 2007 in her efforts, I was absolutely stunned at all of the emails, and I really appreciate you documenting this. I know it took extra work to do all the emails and make these phone calls, but it is astounding to see that these complaints have been going on for nine years. but it is astounding to see that these complaints have been going on for nine years. And I think all of that time, the same vendor has been employed, contracted to the, to the township on this. I think it's an open-shut case that these guys are not performing to their contract, and we should take a serious look at kicking them out of this contract for non-performance and drawing up specs to see if we can find somebody else. I just, I, I just can't imagine any resident, let alone lots of residents, having to go through this for year after year, all of the emails, all the complaints she's had to make. And I, I do want to hear, to keep up with, with what's going on with this, because this is just, it's outrageous. And if anybody else is out there watching, and your, your garbage or your recycling, you hear that truck before 6:30, call the police. Because we need to get a better idea of how often this is happening throughout the town. This is just, this has to stop. And I know why they're doing it, because it's cheaper for them to get the, to do it as early as possible, and so that they don't have to send another truck. I understand that it's cheaper for them, and it, in turn, makes more profit for them. But they are not complying with our ordinance, which just has to be contractual. They, they absolutely have to comply with the ordinance. It doesn't know if and or buts. And, and I hope the rest of the council joins me in saying, if these guys don't clean up right away, that we need to start the process of, of kicking them out of the contract and finding somebody else who will work with the, work with the ordinance. Mr. Meyerwitz, you asked a very good question about where our people on fixed incomes going to come, going to get the money for this, this tax increase. I, I am with you on that, and I just want everybody to know, even though we are introducing the budget tonight, and we're also having a public hearing in May, this process can go on for multiple months, where we, as the council and the administration, can look for ways to reduce costs or increase revenues. And there's a lot more to come on this budget this year. Just speaking for myself, I'm sure my colleagues are also looking as, as well. The budget, just, just to follow up, just a few things. The, the total appropriation proposed this year is going up almost $5 million, 6.5% from the budget last year, so that's a significant increase. And the taxing, the proposed tax increase right now is 2%, which is the maximum we can do without other exclusions that are allowed under the tax cap law. But, but stay tuned, because there should be more coming on. And, and I just want to do a shout-out to Ms. Clemmison, because she is oftentimes the Lone Ranger in the audience, trying to keep track of these, the budget actions, and is a very big help to me, and I assume the rest of the council, to have an independent set of eyes looking at this. And I appreciate a lot of your comments tonight, and I think Mr. Gross made a good point, that it's, it's much harder to deal with them just in real time by voice. If it's something that you can put in writing and send around, I think we'd be able to get, get things clarified and addressed a little bit better. I've been on the council for almost six years now, and every year, since you've been here, we have this tax cap ordinance, and it, every year, it causes consternation. And I understand why, because the ordinance itself is not, in my opinion, not written in English, and it doesn't talk about anywhere there why we're doing this, in a practical effect that everybody can understand. And perhaps we could look at this going forward, and if, even if we can't put the language in the ordinance, because it's an ordinance, at least let's, let's have an addendum that says in plain English, why we're doing this, why you shouldn't necessarily be scared, and, and what the practical effect is of it is. And maybe that would reduce the alarm for a lot of, a lot of people. Ms. Morelli, you raised the issue about whether we, if we didn't do the Gregory School Project, which is a total of $375,000, we could use that money elsewhere. I agree with you, except for the fact that the cash portion of this would only be the 5% that is required under state law to, to bond. The rest of this money would be borrowed and paid back over years. So it's, it's not apples to apples, it's not $375,000 sitting here that we could just move somewhere else. What we could do is not do it, and then we would save both the, both the, the down payment and, and the payback. But the council, the majority, has decided to go in, in the other direction, so it's, it's not really an issue anymore. I appreciate Mr. Puglisi once again making us aware of some of the benefits of living in Essex County. Mr. Even, I really appreciate you coming in and giving a professional review of where things stand with the Gregory School Project. You've made a great deal of good points. There were a lot of good points that were made at the meeting by people who were saying, maybe it does need to be changed, and I hope you will continue to keep an eye out on it so that the issues can be raised, and, and eventually, this will come back to the council. And we will need your, your guidance and input, I'm sure, when it gets to that point. One more, one more item on the, on the budget this year. The, the library had, had requested an additional $206,000 this year from the township to prevent further reductions in their programming and in their hours and in their employment. And at, at this point, the, the budget that we're going to introduce today does not contain that extra $206,000. But I, and I, I'm expecting my colleagues to, to look really hard to see if we can find that money for, for the, for the library. It's, it's valuable to the community, I think everybody's agreed on that. We just got to maybe sharpen the pencils a little bit more to try to find that money and, and make it a priority. That's, that's all I have for Council President. Thank you.
Can I go next?
Sure.
Thank you, Council President. Just like to bring up, to thank you to everyone who came tonight to express your opinions and concerns and your information on the operations of the Township West Orange. Dr. Uma, thank you. And also, I'd like to hear one, if, if your other neighbors are having the same thing, I'd like to hear from them, too, to get a consensus if it's happening, you know. They should be complaining as well, but, you know, you shouldn't have to experience that. And I'm sure the administration will address this issue, and this thing should be resolved very shortly. Talking about the Gregory School Project, the one thing I don't notice what's going on with the review is that where's the traffic engineer? You, you have architects and stuff like that. There needs to be a traffic engineer involved in this whole proposal when it's looked at. And that's the part that I'd like to see when any more reviews and the project moves forward, if it moves forward, that a traffic engineer, and we have tremendous traffic engineers who live within this township, I have two of them that are on my pedestrian advisory board. So I'm sure they could be tapped to, to put any input in, and that would be a great help.
We have the planning board.
Right, and the same, the planning board, right. With the tax situation at township and the budget where it's going, when it gets to the library, I know that the, there's an issue with review of previous audit to the library budget and their reserve allocations, and once we see those, we can see exactly how much the library has in its reserves. I mean, the township has agreed, you know, for facade improvement, HVACA, you know, just to cover their expenses, yes, it is a town-owned building, but these are expenses that we will cover, but the town can't do. But if you're talking cover facade and cover HVAC, you're talking more than $200,000 and to do the additional operating expense. Believe me, nobody loves the library more than I do, and I know my council colleagues love the library, too. And these are things that we're going to have to look at, have to look at our budget and see. But at this point, things are very, very lean. And I think the other thing that the administration and Mr. Gross would could be, when people look at the increase in the budget, and we talk about the 500 million, you know, the $5 million change, what really caused that? I know it's been talked about that, it's our health benefit, it's our loss ratio. And that's what the residents have to understand, it's a loss ratio. It's because of our funding, the way we fund our plant and everything. So I think that's what residents have to understand, that, you know, the majority of our employees who are on our plant are retirees, they're older people, and they experience increased health benefit, health requirements, you know, surgeries, requirements, you know, prescriptions, the whole thing. That all comes into play. So those are things that we need to put out there, too, so people don't have the impression, well, what is this? You know, it's more of a plain English way of doing, to explain to people, and that's, that's what we need to do. And, but other than that, I think, you know, we're in the right direction. It's good to hear from the different residents in the town who bring their expertise. But I think, you know, what we owe them back is a little more plain, you know, understanding of what, what makes up our numbers, and all that, and so. Thank you, Council President.
Thank you, Councilman. Councilwoman?
Yes. Going back to the budget, Mr., I don't want to really jump in, but Mr. Sayers, I think it's important, seeing some comments floating around between emails and, and, I guess, on the internet. Can you just explain to the public, as you, we talked about the employee contract, how it was going up 2%, and some folks see that certain, certain, I want to, staff receive higher than a 2%. And could you explain how they, they fall on the salary guide and how they may vary from employee to employee? Also, if a person was promoted because of additional responsibilities, you know, that too would change that percentage?
Yes. What happens is everyone is on a, on a salary guide, and it's a seven-step salary guide, depending upon your position, and that salary guide is different for all different types of positions. So if you're in one position, and you're at step five, let's say, and then you get promoted to a different position, and you would automatically go to step six. So you're getting a step increase, which could be anywhere from, depending upon what type of position it is, from $2,500 to almost $8,000. And then, once you get that promotion and that 2% kicks in, and the 2% gets tied on to that, that step increase. So every step goes up by 2% as per their contracts. So let's say, for argument's sake, you went from one position to another position, and you got a $7,000 raise, and then the 2% kicks in, then it's going to be $7,000 plus 2%. And then add on top of that, you may be in longevity, which we have eliminated for all non-uniform employees over the last 10 years. But the employees that are still here, who then get longevity, could also get a longevity increase, which also would add to, 2% also goes on your longevity increase. So it's possible, at some point, you could get promoted and wind up getting a $12,000 raise in one year, depending upon what position you're in.
But I believe it's important to explain to the public when you, when you negotiate that pool of money, that 2%, it, it's for all the salaries.
It is. It's for, it's for salaries, it's for increments, and it's for your longevity. It goes on your, your salary, whatever increment that you would be moving to, and it also goes on to your longevity. That's contractual.
Yeah, because I, I believe folks sometimes get confused where it's, and I went through, through this negotiating school board contracts, that it's a pool of money that you're, it's a dollar amount, and it's a percentage, the 2% of the entire dollar amount, but it will vary from employee to employee.
Correct.
Depending where you sit on, on the salary guide, so.
But also be aware that we have eliminated longevity for non-uniform employees, which is a big thing. I mean, it's helped us to save some money, and we're working on trying to, you know, move that along.
Yeah, and I appreciate that Saturday. It was very educational. I really like to thank the directors for all coming in. Each director, although we were, it was, we were fortunate enough not to have to lay off individuals, we did have to remove positions from those particular directors. And they took it, they took it really well. They took on, they, they were very, very, they came in like soldiers, and they're big losses to all of their departments, because they have, even though those positions might have been vacant or somebody retired, it's still a workload that they had to re-manage within their department. So, and we asked each of them individually how that would affect their departments, and they were very thoughtful answers, but they, I have to thank them and commend them for all the work that they've done with Mr. Gross and Mr. Sayers and the rest of the administration. I also like to thank Mrs. Morelli, Ms. Clemmison, for sitting there that entire Saturday with us, so. And you saw, we went, God bless them, is right, because you, you went line item by line item. And we were digging around, and I appreciate my colleague for still being optimistic where we could find the additional library funds in those line items. Hopefully, we'll get a pot of revenue somewhere that we haven't calculated yet. So it, it should be interesting to see what occurs by May 3rd. But a very thoughtful process. I appreciated it my first time here. And I know Mr. Meyerwitz had mentioned, I appreciate his comments about other townships, but I went to the League of Municipalities Budget Seminar that they had down in Westminster on another long Saturday, being schooled a little bit. And everyone's hit with these costs that we're being hit with, so it's across the state. And I appreciate the work and the due diligence of the administration. Also, looking at my comments, and, and Ms. Clemmison, thank you for bringing up the, what I want to ask the administration about, this, what, what they did at the school board with the retirees. They, I guess they look at their ratings for their, their retirees, and they, they made a decision for them to come off their plan, so, you know, they ran numbers. I don't know how beneficial that was. Obviously, they made that decision. So that is what Ms. Clemmison was referring to, so I'm not sure if you looked at those numbers yet or not. But that was, I just wanted to point out that comment. Mrs. Morelli, I saw you at the, the St. Patty's Day celebration that they had for seniors, and I'm glad they do have those type of events. I like to thank the Helping Hands Club at Liberty Middle School. The kids came down to help out and, and serve, so I thought that was a great, another community experience, having our students interact with our residents, which is something that I've always been proud of, that we try to do as much as possible within the district. And I'm not going to repeat, oh, Ms., Dr. Una, I appreciate you coming down, and I'm sorry that you've been so frustrated. You could have Valley Way to that, that list of streets.
We would be having.
The street sweeper or the garbage collection?
I know, my street sweeper comes. I fly out there every Monday morning, because I also get ticketed at 8:00 AM on a Monday morning. So our street sweeper definitely comes, and the police drives down Valley Way to do, to do ticket. But on Wednesday mornings, they're, they're bright and early, but for me, that's a, a good thing to, to get me up and going. But they are there very early. And, let's see, and Mr. Even? Thank you very much for attending the meeting the other evening, and thank you for your designs, as I explained to you that evening. I would have been disappointed if you didn't show up with, with drawings, and I always, and I always appreciate your input. It was, it was a very good meeting. I was very pleased with the residents. It could have been a really tough meeting, and at times, it did get a little tough, where, where you have folks that live on Lowell Avenue versus the folks that live directly across the street from the school, and everybody has different opinions, but every, everyone was respectful. And again, not to labor this point, but it was a conceptual plan. It will, all the comments were, were taken into consideration, and I look forward to when the final plan is presented. And, but I don't think that will be here, though. I believe that will be. Yeah, the planning board, but I know there was mention of it coming back here, but not, not the design.
The contract.
The contract, okay. I just wanted to make that clear to the public, in case I get another email questioning about it. And also, thank you, Mr. Connor, for coming down, and Anthony, for all the great events in the county. Those are my comments.
Thank you, Councilwoman. Councilman Kukovia?
Just a couple of quick questions. Yes, just about the budget. I, I noticed in preparation for the, for the budget hearing, and, and didn't raise this issue, we were talking about the 2% on the salaries. I did a test of about 40 different salaries by, throughout the, the budget, and a lot of them did not appear to be taking a step or, or any other additional.
Consideration.
Thank you. Everybody was getting a 3.5% increase in their base salary.
Yeah, as, as we discussed at the hearing, when, when last year's budget was adopted, there were no, the, the contracts hadn't been settled. So then, last year's budget, as adopted, had the pre-settlement amount. Then there was a settlement last year, and then in last year, there was a percent and a half for, for non, non-uniforms, percent and a half, and then 2%, so there's your three and a half percent. So you had to make, it's two years of increases made up in one year's budget.
If anybody's looking at the budget and they do the math, they'll see that, so I just want. The, the other point I just wanted to make is that there are certain salary increases just want, the, the other point I just wanted to make is that there are certain salary increases that the, that have been given to people in the administration who are not covered by labor contracts. And some of those amounts have greatly exceeded the, the contractual amounts. And I'm not going to go into them, but there are increases in, in our salary costs that have come about not because of contract. And in the greater scheme of things, in a seventy-eight, seventy-nine million dollar budget, it doesn't seem like a lot, but as everybody, I'm sure, is sick of hearing me say, a dollar saved is a dollar saved. So I just didn't want people to think that, that, that was.
Everything was either contract or, or salary ordinance. For instance, if you, if, there were some increases that were granted in two thousand fifteen's budget, which were to be implemented over two years, and there's a salary ordinance for that. So that, those are all in them. But there's nothing new in, there's nothing in there at all new above what has been approved by council, by, by, you know, contract, and of course, the salary ordinances.
Right. But it's not by, it's, it's, it's not, it's not covered by a labor contract.
It's not covered by a labor, but it is covered by law.
That's right. It is covered by law, but there, but I, I think you agree with me, there are increases that exceeded the three and a half percent over how many years you want to look at it, that were not required by a labor contract. That's, that's the only point I was making.
The point is that there's different classifications, right? There's different classifications in terms of salary, the way the salary is structured.
But they also weren't optional. That's the, the, I still want to make an inference, because it wasn't a labor contract, that somehow they were optional, that this council could then say, oh, no, just take it out of the budget, because they couldn't, because there was an ordinance in place that the council adopted for all, all salaries. So just wanted to make sure, well, you're right, some of it is not labor contract per se. It is certainly legal by the sense that the council has already made that decision.
Yeah, certainly wouldn't want to imply that it wasn't legal. I'm just saying, uh, some of these are, as you pointed out, yeah, it wasn't optional. It was, the council has approved, council majority approved, and, and the council, in some cases, council majority in others.
But those, were those past decisions?
Yes.
Past decisions?
Yeah.
Not from this budget?
So, so thank you. And, and I think there was consent during that discussion, that, you know, whenever we consider any increase or step increase, you have to look at the long-term picture, because as it was explained in that specific example, it can have long-term effects in terms of the, of the, of the level, the percentage of, of, of increase over time. So anyhow, Madam Clerk, we're done with public comment. It is nine thirteen PM.
Yes, it is.
Consent agenda?
Yes, it is.
Thank you all for being here and, and for your thoughtful comments.
Approval of meeting minutes of previous meeting, public meeting, March eighth, two thousand sixteen.
Consent.
Report of township officers, none. Reading of petitions and communications and bids, none. Bills. Are there any questions on the bills?
Consent.
Consent.
Resolutions. Are any resolutions being pulled this evening?
I just have a question on H.
We have a question on H. Any resolutions pulled? Councilwoman Castellino, your question on Resolution H?
Just in the, uh, thank you, Council President. Just in the, uh, award of the contract to regioconstruction. I had sent an email a couple days ago. Are there speed bumps going to?
There are, there are none scheduled for this, where there are, there are no plans at this point in time. As, as, as things would have it, there may be requests once we get going, and we'll have to deal with that, depending on how many there are. Could be done through a change order, could be done by a separate contract. Depends what, what, what we think is, is, is less. We do not openly solicit all the roads that we're going to do. They ask the residents whether they want speed bumps or not. But if, if in the process, there is a desire to do that, we will respond to that.
Well, I just don't want to be put in a situation as last time, where we were engaged in a project over by the high school, where it was more than likely they would have requested, made that request. And then, we were kind of locked into the pricing, because we had to get the project done. So if there's anything on the radar, that Mr. Laporte thinks may be a request, we should?
I spoke to Mr. Laporte today specifically about these contracts in these streets, and as of today, we have no request for anticipation of any, you know, any, if, if he had been, he would have included it. You know, that does, again, that doesn't change, things may evolve.
I understand.
And we, we'll, we'll deal with that as it comes. But, but it's not, it's not, not put in there upfront.
Yeah, but the biggest issue is, is we do not install speed bumps unless the neighbors want them. And that's a process. We go into the neighborhood, we distribute. If people from the neighborhood have a meeting, we go in there, if they want speed bumps, we explain to them what we do. We actually take a vote of all the neighbors in the neighborhood, and if it's over sixty percent, then we would install the speed bumps. So we don't, that's why it's not figured into the cost of doing a street, unless someone comes to us from the neighborhood and says, hey, you know, we need, we want to have speed bumps, can, you know, you help us do that. So we don't automatically do that, ever.
Okay.
If I can, oh, I can, I'm, I'm, no, I'm sorry. If I, Council President, I can, sure.
Can I?
No, I'm sorry. No, I thought she was, I'm sorry, Council.
No, that's okay. I, I do that all the time. I get excited. I, I, no, that's all, 'cause I just, 'cause with that prior situation, and if, if there's anything we could, you know, be a little proactive with, 'cause I just don't like to be stuck with a change order of a, if, if we don't have to. Okay. Thank you all.
Thank you, Councilman.
No, it's, I'm saying, I apologize, Councilwoman, the thing is, is that, but in all my discussions with Mr. Laporte, and all the years being here, and everything with all street repair, you know, Lenny, Mr. Laporte has always explained to me that, when it comes to every road improvement, he surveys the whole block. He goes resident by resident. He goes down handing out his letter, asking them what, what their situation is, would they like a speed bump. And what I'm just saying, just to let you know, that's, that's the process that he, that he, that he does. And then it will come back to us with, just, just wanted to add that.
But he only does that if there's a request.
Correct.
If there's no request, we don't do that.
He doesn't ask, right.
Okay.
Do you have any questions?
No.
Okay, question in that resolution?
Just a quick question.
Yes, please.
I don't know whether it requires to pull the resolution, but it's Agenda Item K, Resolution ninety-two sixteen, Resolution authorizing Blau and Blau, Special Counsel for the purpose of handling commercial tax appeals. It was previously referenced in the meeting.
Yes, yes.
About this. I just, uh, just noticed that the resolution refers to a contingency fee, but it doesn't describe what the contingency fee is. And I'm not sure whether.
It's in his contract. It was when, when, when counsel, when the council approved Blau and Blau's contract back at the beginning of the year. That's, and it's, it's the same provision that's been in the past four or five years, where he gets a certain percent, I don't remember off the top of my head, he gets a percentage of whatever the savings for the, the benefit is for the township.
Right. And I think it's, I think it's one-third of the, of the first year proceeds.
It might be that, I just don't remember exactly. I don't want to.
Mr. Sayers, Mr. Kizer?
But that's already been set. I mean, the, only thing you're doing now, within that, within that, is that he cannot do them on his own without approval. So the council will, this resolution is his approval to move forward. But otherwise, he couldn't move forward. That's what this resolution is about.
Yeah, I'm just wondering if the resolution should say what the contingency fee is. Mr. Kizer, does it matter?
It's in the contract.
Okay. Does anybody know what, what the contingency, I think it's a?
I don't, I really don't. I'd have to look up the contract. I, I don't have it in front of me.
Okay. Maybe we just follow up next week, I mean, the next council meeting. But if it doesn't, if it's not required to be in there, I didn't want to pull it. So I just want to ask the question. Thank you. That's all I have. Council President?
Thank you, Councilman. Any other questions on resolutions? Seeing none, Madam Clerk?
Is there a motion to approve the consent agenda?
Oh, yeah, I'm sorry.
Make it all the way around. Okay. Only because I see Perry still here. One of the questions, um, this is on Resolution C, about Slide the City. There wasn't a provision in there about a cancellation. Do we have to, had anything if Slide the City, for some reason, decides they're not coming? Do we have to?
I mean, it's, there's nothing, we, we're not, we don't have any money invested in it, so I don't see that as being an issue, quite honestly.
We'd have to get back to escrow.
Well, but I mean, after all the advertising again, and, yeah, we don't, but.
And if we did, we'd take it out the escrow.
Right.
True. I mean, you know, if we ran, if we ran any expenses and they canceled, we would then, we, we would still run, write those expenses in person, right, from the escrow. So I think we're protected.
Thank you.
Thank you.
It's a good question.
Okay, is there?
We have one more question. I'm sorry, Madam Clerk.
Sorry, to my colleague's point, is maybe could we, well, Mr. Kizer, you're sitting here, is it necessary to put something, amend the contract to, no?
Because there's no.
We have no expenses.
Okay.
So why would we need a con, a cancellation clause in a contract, if it's not costing us any money? And plus, before they start, we're gonna have twenty thousand dollars in the bank of their money. So if there is something, as Mr. Gross said, if there is a cost, we're gonna have twenty thousand dollars of their money, and we'll take out the cost and give them back the rest of the escrow money.
I'm good.
Okay. Now, I'm just thinking, I'm just thinking if it's necessary, that's all. I know we've benef, we benefit, I'm just thinking. Okay.
Okay. Is there a motion to approve the consent agenda?
So moved.
Second.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? The consent agenda is implemented.
Thank you, Madam Clerk.
Council President, can I ask a question?
Yes, Mr. Sayers?
Um, would you mind going to Resolution C first, since Jessica has been sitting here all night, and if anyone? No.
No, nothing was pulled.
Nothing was pulled.
Oh, okay, I'm sorry.
We're moving, we're moving.
Yeah, but she's here for, no, she's here for the ordinance.
Yeah, she's here, yeah, she's here for the, yeah.
So what I'm asking you to do is to use that one first.
Okay, those two first, right?
Oh, ordinance C. Yeah, I'm sorry.
Okay.
Oh.
I had to talk to it.
Yeah, absolutely. I don't see a.
Twenty-four eighty-one dash sixteen on first reading.
Is there any discussion?
There is no discussion on first reading.
Yeah, it's only first reading, but not usually discussion on first.
No, but since Jessica's here, can she, she can describe it or?
Right, just let her describe it. I mean, I just, I was gonna talk to it real quick, but sorry.
I don't think she'll be disappointed if you don't talk to her. I don't either.
We've, we've had this discussion about, we've, we've.
I think it's important.
I think, I agree. I, I think it's important to.
And she's here.
I, I think it's important to talk about these ordinances on first reading.
Right.
Well, are we starting a precedent here?
Yes.
No.
That's your decision, Council President.
Well, it depends on which precedent you're talking about. I, I think Councilwoman McCartney and I have talked about, we think it's important to talk about and describe on first reading. Now we've got Ms. Buffman out here, which I think would be a, a separate, separate precedent.
Yeah, okay, well, okay, I'll tell you what. Yeah, come, come up, and what we're gonna do is we're gonna look into this issue. My experience, and from what I see out there, is that when a, when a law, in, in our case, is called an ordinance, is introduced, we're, we're only required to read the title, okay? The title in that, that signals a formal introduction by title, and then it is published, so that the general public, whether it be in this body or any other, other body, can come and provide comments prior to consideration of the council. Whether the timing, whether the vote takes place that night, or it takes place some other time, I mean, that's, that's been the history. I, I don't, I haven't experienced a situation where a, a law is discussed on that, on that first reading. You just, you just read it by topic. But we'll discuss this, uh, by subject, rather. We'll discuss this after the, you know, after today's meeting, and then we'll see what direction we want to go with the body.
Council President, it, it's, it's never necessary to go into a discussion of, of an ordinance on first reading, but neither is it prohibited. From my perspective, the time when it's worth doing is if there's a serious question about support for an ordinance, if the council wants to discuss it, to see if they can, somebody can develop support, if there are changes that somebody wants to make, then they can be done and maybe save some time, because you have to re-advertise. I don't know if there's any of those things involved with respect to this ordinance or not.
Okay, well, we'll, thank you for that legal opinion, and we'll take that under consideration. Yes, Jessica, thank you.
Jessica, hi.
Hi. So I'm only here for, for my main reason is here is to answer any questions. That being said, uh, the whole plan was for the second ordinance, for the second reading, is to have ninja, an individual here from GASP, who would be answering all the questions, who's worked with at least, I believe, fifteen municipalities with the state of New Jersey, on having the e-cigarette licensing ordinance, as well as the tobacco ordinance. But I am here today to answer any questions, clarify anything in the ordinances, and also to take recommendations. So that way, we can bring them back at the second reading, and look into any issues that you have between now and then. So that way, there's no surprises second reading, and then we can get as much information out there before the second reading. So any questions you have, I can hear it answered. If we'd rather wait till the second reading, that's okay as well. But I'm here just to explain anything that you may need.
Right. Thank you, Jessica.
Jessica, I do, I would like, and it was just brought to my attention, that we actually haven't read the, the heading, or the, or the title of the ordinance. So I will allow the clerk to do that at this point.
Twenty-four eighty and twenty-four eighty-one. Okay, so twenty-four eighty dash sixteen is an ordinance amending Chapter Twelve, Sections Eight, Point One, Two, Three, Four, Five, Seven, Eight, Thirteen, Fourteen, and Sixteen, with regard to prohibition of tobacco sales to persons under the age of twenty-one. And twenty-four eighty-one dash sixteen is an ordinance amending Chapter Twelve to include Section Eleven with regard to e-cigarette licensing.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Um, no, we yield the floor to Councilman Moreno.
Okay, thank you. Thank you, Council President. Jessica, thank you for being here. Thank you for all the research that you've done to support this, this ordinance. You know, it, it's something, it's another quality of life issue. It's another important issue, particularly for our young residents. Cigarette smoking is becoming such an increased hazard for their health and long-term health benefits. I feel it's something that we need to address. It's something that has been ignored, but it's not being ignored by nine states across the country, a hundred and twenty-five municipalities across the country, Hawaii being the first state to incorporate, include, increasing the purchasing age to twenty-one. This ordinance is being reintroduced. It was not passed at the last council meeting. Legal Department went back and did extensive research, working with GASP, which is a national organization, to decrease the amount of youth smoking. The research came back with all our concerns. Come back to answer additional questions, and including additional ordinance to license e-cigarette products. Because e-cigarette products, they, they contain their dangers too. They are chemicals. They contain dangers too. And it will create a revenue stream that will enable the township to do the enforcement and cover the expense for the enforcement of both these ordinance, is of the age twenty-one and purchasing of e-cigarette products. I, I had legal, and I said this was my first issue to propose these two ordinances, and I, I'd like the council to have their input. And at this time, if you have any questions that Jessica can answer that would need to be included in these two ordinances, this is what we should do now, as Mr. Kizer said. So this way, when we come back for a second reading, everything is Ts are crossed and Is are dotted. And that's what I ask my council colleagues to do now. So, thank you, Council President. And Jessica, thank you for being here today.
Thank you, Councilman.
Thank you, Council President.
Any questions for Jessica, for my colleagues?
I, well, Jessica, not so much a question, but thank you for your due diligence, for the material. Mine is more directed towards the administration, because the last time I had an issue was this, it was due to enforcement, and I appreciate the licensing fee to assist in the enforcement. So, Mr. Sayers, I'll just defer to you in regards to how you plan on enforcing the ordinance.
Um, there were discussions with the Chief of Police, I believe, who was at the meeting. And most of the idea of, of having a fee was so that we can do, obviously, education, number one. Number two, it would help us to do enforcement. And number three, a lot of the, the monies that we were gonna take in would go toward, directly to the Health Department, that would go toward putting signs up in windows, basically telling you, you know, if you're twenty-one years old, you can't buy cigarettes unless you're twenty-one, and, you know, e-cigarettes are bad for your health, and all kinds of good stuff. So bottom line for the enforcement was, that, that's why we're looking at the fee. And this way, people are gonna pay the fee, and they're gonna be liable for getting summonses if they're doing things wrong. I think, we think it's, it would definitely help. So that's basically what the game plan is. If there's anything else I missed, you can maybe chime in, but I don't think so.
Yeah, I mean, as far as the enforcement goes, first thing first is Teresa DeNova, who's the health officer, is not here, but she will be here on the second reading to address any and all issues with enforcement. But I can speak about it briefly. We have spoken, just to make it clear, there's sixteen municipalities in New Jersey that have increased the age to purchase tobacco to twenty-one. And there are ten or eleven and counting municipalities in New Jersey that have e-cigarette licensing. One of them, one of the municipalities in Essex County is Belleville, who has a e-cigarette licensing fee of twelve hundred dollars, as well as a tobacco twenty-one ordinance, similar, if not, very, very, very similar to the ordinance that's presented today. But as far as enforcement and. But as far as enforcement goes, I have spoken to, and I know Teresa has spoken to many municipalities and our health officers, and how they've really implemented this. And the first thing is, obviously, notice, and one thing that goes with notice is education and requiring the retailers to sign policies, that they've read the rules, that they understand the regulations, they understand the ordinance, and every employer that is going to sell these e-cigarettes and tobacco is going to abide by the ordinance. And that is going to be kept on file at the town for review by the Health Officer or any of their agents. The other thing is, is the fee, what it's gonna go to, and I believe it's Belleville and Princeton and Westwood that does this, is they have sting operations, the same way we would with alcohol, and they did when alcohol age was increased, is that they'll actually have sting operations, volunteers, or now that we have money, to go in and check and make sure that these retailers are abiding by the ordinance. The other thing is, is like Mr. Sayers spoke about, is education and enforcement, is that a lot of the money will be used in schools, in the area, just to let people know and make them aware of the effects of smoking, the effects of e-cigarettes, and how it can lead to tobacco, and really just bring awareness to the community. That's all that I can speak about right now, but my understanding is, it's, you know, just like every other health violation, is it's, you know, it's an ordinance, and they will enforce it the way they do every other, every other ordinance in the town. But the fee will definitely help with, with that as well.
When this was first brought up, I, I don't know if you remember, but I had said, we used to do this during the summertime. We used to get a grant through the Health Department and hire high school kids during the summer, and they would go out with our health officers, go into a place, buy a pack of cigarettes, knowing that they were under eighteen years old, and if they did that, we would automatically issue them a summons. That grant has dried up, so this inspection fee is gonna be part and parcel of us going back and doing the same type of operation, as Jess called it, a sting operation, but what we do is we would bring a, you know, a young kid in during the summertime, or when they're off from school, and let them go out with one of the health officers, and go into these different places and try and buy things, and if they obviously sell them, then the summonses get issued to the owner.
And the signage, would that be distributed when they pay for the license fee, or how would that work?
So, the signage is obviously in the ordinance, but with respect to, that's a discussion, and I think Teresa may be able to discuss further, but the discussion is that when you pay the licensing fee, you will actually get a sign, so that way they're all the same, and that way as part of the fee you'll get a sign, and that fee has, that sign has to be posted, that way it's clear, everybody has the same one, and everybody in town knows that if the sign is there and it's posted near the cashier, that this is, this is an actual retailer that sells e-cigarettes.
That's correct.
Great. Thank you.
Thank you. I'll yield the floor in a second, Council. I do wanna commend you and the Law Department for your hard work and, and your research. You took a ceremonial proposal, which was presented to us the last time, and you put together a proposal that has a funding stream and a proposal that has an enforcement plan. So I appreciate that work, and also the administration, the, the Health Department, the Police Department, who now have, have bought into this proposal, and now we have something solid that we can present and consider, so thank you for your hard work.
Thank you, and we appreciate your feedback as well, because it's, that's what we like, is feedback. So if there's anything today that we could revise and questions, we can come back, and that's the point of all of this. So, any feedback we can get, I know enforcement was a big issue at the last meeting, you know, we can, we can, you know, invite research and revise, so just let us know.
Sure, and as you recall, I mean, my position was, if it was just going to be ceremonial, I mean, leave it up, that up to the state or the federal government to dictate, but if we're really gonna take this serious, we should, we should include a funding stream and some sort of initiative on how will we enforce that, and, and we've done that, so I'm glad to see that, I appreciate that. Councilman Kukoviac, you raised your hand.
Yes, thank you. Ms. Buffman, I wanted to ask you, I can clearly see in ordinance, proposed ordinance two-four-eight-one, that it talks about the twelve hundred dollar per year licensing fee and fines of up to twenty-five hundred dollars for violations. But it sounds like some of the discussion here that the, the enforcement or stings aren't going to be just focused on e-cigarette merchants, it's going to be focused on all cigarette merchants?
Well, it's e-cigarette as well as any tobacco-related products.
Does, does the two-four-eight-one, does the language of two-four-eight-one make that clear? Because this is a, an ordinance about e-cigarette licensing, as opposed to two-four-eight-oh, which is the, which is the ordinance prohibiting tobacco sales to persons under age of twenty-one. I guess my point is, if, if you don't have language in here that says that you can do your sting operations for non-e-cigarettes, is that actually going to be prohibited?
It says any tobacco-related items. So if, if, if you're selling cigarettes to people under eighteen years old, and the, and the law is twenty-one, we have the right to go in there and summon you if we catch you doing that. The money is basically going to the Health Department to basically set up a program for both of those things.
And I think when this came up before, I think I asked you, and I can't remember whether I asked you about the past three years or the past five years, but I just wanted to know what enforcement the town had done since then.
Again, I don't know when the grant ran out, to be quite honest with you, but I, I do recall that when we had the grant, I don't know if you have anything on this, but...
It was before me.
Yeah, it had to be. We, we used to have a grant, we got a grant every year, and that, we used to do this every summer, and we'd send high school kids out that came in and worked for us part-time during the summer with a health officer, and they'd go around to different locations and purchase cigarettes. And if they sold them to someone who was under eighteen, they were automatically issued a summons, but we were getting a grant to do that. We don't get that grant anymore, so part of the initiative with these two ordinances is to get a fee from the owners of stores so that we can now re-implement that program. And like Jessica said, people are gonna have to be subjected to come in and register, they're gonna get their signs, and they're gonna be told upfront exactly, you know, what's gonna happen, or what could happen if in fact you do sell these things to underage kids.
Right. But I think you said there, there hadn't been any enforcement actions in at least three years.
I don't believe so.
Okay, okay. So, I, I'm also confused, because right now, whenever you go into a merchant that sells cigarettes, you have to see that sign that says, "We're not gonna sell to anybody under eighteen," they're everywhere. So now you're suggesting that we have two signs that the vendors...
The age is gonna be changed from eighteen to twenty-one.
Right, okay.
The eighteen sign comes down, the twenty-one sign goes up.
In New Jersey, it's actually nineteen.
Is it nineteen? I thought it was eighteen.
No, it's nineteen for the purchase.
Oh, okay.
If you remember, the governor vetoed it the day of the council meeting.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Yeah, it's okay, but, you know.
So, I, I'm like, I, I don't plan to discuss this further, I just wanted to clarify that on the, on the language, but that's, that's all I had for tonight.
Thank you, Council.
Thank you. So Jessica, I do say thank you. I did vote yes the first time around, based on what the Institute of Medicine, just the numbers, statistics that they had put out back in January, about the result in two-hundred-and-twenty-three-thousand fewer premature deaths, fifty thousand fewer deaths from lung cancer, four-point-two-million fewer lives lost, so that was enough to convince me to vote yes. And now, and I think at that time, there were only nine municipalities that had passed that, and now it's up to sixteen.
There's sixteen, yes, and Belleville is one in Essex County, and I, it's growing every day, I can't keep up with Google, but...
Right, right, so, right, so it would be that movement to, to move this forward. I think, what I understand is that we have two-hundred-and-fifty retailers in town, I do like the education component, we talked about that. So letting retailers know that this ordinance, if it is passed, will be in effect, and the fact that other municipalities are already doing this, that we have a model to, you know, we're not really creating this on our own, we have a model to follow. If the retailers are notified, and what, how, I don't know how to word this, what if they don't comply? I mean, they have to comply, they would have to comply, they have, what if they don't come in? You know, I guess I'm trying to understand the process.
So they won't buy the twenty-five hundred dollars.
They're fined for not complying, for not complying.
Because the ordinance would read that it's a requirement, that if you're going to...
So it's not just selling, it's complying all around.
I believe it says that, "No person shall conduct, maintain, or operate a retail electronic smoking device establishment that sells, distributes, or gives electronic smoking devices without first obtaining the West Orange Health Department a license to do so."
That is the provision, right.
So it would, it would say that if they didn't comply, and that's a component which is, tobacco is regulated by the state, but e-cigarettes are not, which is why more and more municipalities are providing some regulation, because people are just selling e-cigarettes everywhere, and this would force e-cigarette distributors and retailers to really just comply with regulations and...
Take a closer look.
Exactly.
Great, thank you.
Thank you. Councilwoman, any other questions? Seeing none, Madam Clerk.
Okay, so we'll do them individually. Is there a motion to introduce twenty-four eighty dash sixteen on, I'm sorry, introduce and approve on first reading, twenty-four eighty dash sixteen?
Second.
Councilwoman Castellino?
Yes.
Councilman Guarino?
Yes.
Councilman Kukoviac?
No.
Councilwoman McCartney?
Yes.
Council President Cirillo?
Yes.
And twenty-four eighty-one dash sixteen, is there a motion to introduce and approve on first reading?
So moved.
Second.
Councilwoman Castellino?
Yes.
Councilman Guarino?
Yes.
Councilman Kukoviac?
No.
Councilwoman McCartney?
Yes.
Council President Cirillo?
Yes. Thank you, Madam Clerk. Thank you, Council colleagues.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Jessica.
Thank you, Jessica.
Thank you, have a good night.
You too.
I'm gonna tell Richard you were late.
Twenty-four seventy-nine dash sixteen, Madam Clerk?
Yes. Calendar year two thousand and sixteen, ordinance to exceed the municipal budget appropriation limits and to establish a cap bank. Is there a motion to introduce and approve on first reading?
So moved.
Second.
Councilwoman Castellino?
Yes.
Councilman Guarino?
Yes.
Councilman Kukoviac?
Yes.
Councilwoman McCartney? Council President Cirillo?
Yes.
And finally, ordinances on second and final reading, twenty-four seventy-eight dash sixteen, an ordinance amending and supplementing Chapter Nineteen, Section Ten of the General Ordinances of the Township of West Orange entitled Annual Sewer Charges. Is there a motion to introduce on second and final reading?
So moved. Second.
Councilwoman Castellino?
Yes.
Councilman Guarino?
Yes.
Councilman Kukoviac?
Yes.
Councilwoman McCartney?
Yes.
Council President Cirillo?
Yes.
I have a question.
Any member of the public wish to address the council on ordinance twenty-four seventy-eight dash sixteen? Seeing none, any of my colleagues wish to comment on twenty-four seventy-eight dash sixteen.
Madam Clerk?
Well, just not, not a comment, but this is one of those examples that on first reading, we did discuss this, and we did talk about the supporting documentation to help you get to this point, to make the final vote. So I think, as needed, and as this discussion comes up, that the discussion, I, I believe, is very helpful when you get to this point at second reading.
Thank you. Councilwoman? Madam Clerk?
Is there a...
Oh, we have...
Oh, I'm sorry.
Never mind.
Thank you, Counsel President. I just, I wanted to ask a question, because I don't know about the rest of you guys, but I'm getting a lot of flak from residents about raising this for a second time within the last few years from two-hundred-and-fifty dollars to three-hundred-and-fifty dollars, this is the sewer assessment fee. And I, I just want to ask about the analysis that Mr. Gross did, as you may recall, I guess when we were talking about raising it to two-hundred-and-fifty dollars, I had asked for an analysis of the costs and, and where the revenue would go, and I wanted to, I got it updated for this year, and I think everybody else has that as well. What I was trying to find out was, what are our actual costs and how we come up with it? And I'm, I'm hoping Mr. Gross can explain, because as you know from the spreadsheet, there are eight items that are listed that contributing to the costs this year of about seven-point-one million dollars for all-in-all sewer costs. That's, that's up almost a million dollars, it's up nine-hundred-and-eighty-two thousand dollars, or sixteen percent from six-point-one million last year. And what I was trying to figure out is the nature of the cost. Some of these costs are dollars that go out the door. For example, not quite half of the cost that I think I've identified go out the door, it's money that goes out the door. We pay, we're paying about a little over two-point-nine million dollars to joint meeting to take our sewage, and then we have a couple of line items, I think seven or eight, which are actually in our budget and that cover, cover the work that we're doing, that, that town employees are doing to maintain the, the sewers. But it looks like more than half of these numbers are, are estimates of the cost, and I just wanted to flag this, because if we're not incurring the costs, we're not throwing the cash out, maybe we don't have to raise this again, but I wanted to just throw it to Mr. Gross, because he and I have not had a chance to discuss this in depth, and...
A, a number of the costs involved in here are, are what I'll call estimates based, or amortized estimates. For instance, you know, the cost of construction of the entire sewage system, you know, which has a fifty-year life, you know, it, that means on average, you're replacing two percent a year. Now, you don't, we don't replace two percent a year, you replace it, some year you may, may do very, very little, some year you may do five or ten percent. So this is, this is a, a, a projection of what our costs would be over time in order to, to maintain the system, and that's the other thing, we don't, we don't replace the whole system at once, we, we maintain it as, as we go along. So, so this is an amortized projection of what our costs could, would be. Our costs are also, there's no, there's not a specific line item I can put you towards, most of it's in capital, you know, in, in that, in that sense, so one of the things that is not in here is any, I didn't figure any financing costs, because, because we're doing, because of the type of projection, I don't think it's necessary. So there, but there are other costs you could consider. But again, you know, if you, we're looking at, the, the first three are, are two percent amortizations for, so basically what it costs us to maintain over a fifty-year period. The other, the, the actual, the, the pump stations, is that a three percent, because we think that's realistically the, the lifespan on a pump station, probably around thirty-five, thirty, thirty-three, thirty-five years. The engineer, engineer and I sat down with this and went through it, evaluated it, feel very confident that these numbers reflect, you know, a, a real projection of what our costs are on to, to maintain our system going off into the future. And, and the fact is, we've already invested all this money, you know, and, and, you know, before we started approaching it this way for years, all we were collecting was the cost of treatment. What's that?
Or B I.
Yeah, so we've, we've invested over the last hundred years...
Sure.
...into the system that's there now, so we have, you know, we're not, we're not looking to recoup that money, but moving forward, we think we should be, we should be getting the money that it takes to, to, to maintain the system, so that when we, we go out to, we float a bond to, to, as we, you know, to do, to last year and this year, we're doing pump stations, you know, that, that, the, the numbers are higher that we're gonna, we, we were spending over last year and this year than we're projecting for this year. But over time, that, it's gonna even out.
So just a couple of questions about that. The, the, part of the spreadsheet is, is the, trying to assign a value to the total system, and the total system, according to the, the two spreadsheets, went up from a hundred-and-twenty-six million dollars last year to a hundred-and-thirty-eight million dollars this, did I get that right? Yeah, million dollars. So it, I'm looking at this, and I'm saying, how could, how could the value of the sewer system go up twelve million dollars in one year, which is roughly ten percent? How, how did that happen?
If you go back to two thousand... What, what number you have, the, the start number?
This is, this is what's weird, I've got, the, the spreadsheet that you sent previously the first time has two-hundred, two thousand and fifteen sewer construction and maintenance projections.
The one we did last year.
Yeah, but I think we got it before that.
Yeah, no, actually, there's a two thousand and thirteen was the first year that we did it.
Okay.
Okay.
And then you updated it in two thousand and fifteen?
We probably did, you know, a general update. This year, we sat down and looked, you know, very, frankly, more critically at it. I... I think previously, we had the, the pump stations, we were looking at them as 50 years, and we took a look at that, and that's really, you know, our pump stations don't last 50 years. And that, so that, that increased the amortization by moving that from 50 to 33.
But would that affect the asset value?
Yeah. Well, in terms of, oh, I'm sorry. We also took a look at the value of the pump stations, in terms of the asset value.
So you thought, between last year and this year, that?
Well, it's not that so much that between last year that it increased, but what we did last year, when we, when we first did it, we first did it in 13, we upgraded it, when I, we did an update last year, we just did, took a look at what the incremental costs had changed. But then when we looked at this year, we actually looked at, you know, really, what does it take, what do these pumps really cost? You know, when we did it in 13, we, we probably didn't do as lower, low-level analysis of it. So when we did this year, we were more critical of that.
So the $12 million, the 10 percent increase in the value from last year to this year is?
It's not inflation, it's more looking at the actual, if you look, nuts and bolts of pumps, of what really goes into our pump stations. And, you know, for instance, you know, previous to that, we took, we took a typical pump station and multiplied that by nine to come up with our value. This year, we actually looked at the individual pump stations and say, you know, there was some more than others, you know, where, where the cost was dramatically higher.
And did you base the estimates on the asset value or on investment value? Investment meaning the money that we've put in over the last 50 or 100 years?
No, just asset value.
Okay. So let me just ask you a couple of quick questions. The, the projected cost for the sanitary sewers, just the standard, went down 13 percent from last year to this year. So it went down from the, the cost to, I guess, replace or to maintain, I'm not sure which.
Which, which line are we talking?
Line one, standard size, sanitary sewers. Went down almost $200,000, or 13 percent. Why would that go down that much in one year?
Well, again, you know, when we looked at the asset value, we took a look at, just basically more critically, you know, when we sat down and went through, what are these different ones made up, what are the lengths, and came up with what Lenny believed were, were better numbers than what we had in the past.
Okay. So, so the cost went down 13 percent, or your cost estimates. Then on the sanitary large sewers, they also went down the exact same number. This would be line two.
Right.
They also went down 13.04 percent. And that's for the same reason?
Yes.
Okay. So then the next item, three, is road resurfacing, and that's, that goes up 74 percent from last year to this year, from $320,000 last year to $557,000 this year. And how, how did you arrive at, at that huge cost increase?
Well, we've seen, we've seen some major increases. When we first did it back in 13, you know, the labor was on a downward trend right after the crash. We've since seen a major increase. As far as the actual cost per unit that we have here, again, Lenny and I sat down, Lenny cracked open the books, and we just did a more critical look at these numbers, based on today's, where we are now.
Okay. And then you previously mentioned the pump stations, and we had trouble with one of them last year, and this is projecting 160 percent increase in the cost for pump stations from $441,000 to $1,101,500. And what was driving that?
I don't know how to say it again, but, you know, we, you know.
Okay, just, I just wondered, like, for example, we're having to do substantial work to the pump station up off of Northfield near Livingston.
But, the, the, look, when we, when we sat down to do 2013, last year, we did an update, so it was, it was an update. When we did 2013, we sat down with our first go-round of numbers, and, and, you know, we were far beyond where we were anticipating going. So we didn't take, quite frankly, waste our labor and time and sweat going down and drilling down to see what actually went into it. We felt comfortable that those numbers represented at least what it was worth, based on what we were going to ask the council to, adjustment to make. This year, in looking at it, we said, okay, let's, let's drill down further, let's get some, let's look at this much closer and see what, what's, as you said, as you can see, some of the stuff went down, you know, some went up. So we start looking at it more critically, you see what the actual components. And it makes sense, you know, there's not a lot of moving parts in the, in the pipes under the ground, but in the pump station, there are. So the fact is, is that when you think about it logically, yeah, that, if, if, if something was going to shift, the things with moving parts would go up, things without moving parts would probably go down.
Thank you, Mr. Gross, appreciate that.
I, I know Council President wants to go, I've got three more questions.
No, it's not, no, it's not about me, it's about the tape that has one and a half minutes left.
Be on tape, it's three minutes.
Okay.
So you can do it any way you want.
So just wanted to flag, since 2012, our, our payments to, to joint meeting have gone up 34 percent. So that's part of this, but, but that's only about, the charge this year is about 2.8 million. I, I think Council President is on the, on the board over there, so if he wants to explain why it's gone up, that's, that's fine, too. Here's my concern. We're, we're charging this as basically a replacement cost, like what we have to replace. But we're taking the money, and we're not spending it on the sewer system. We're, we're, we're taking millions of dollars and using it elsewhere in the budget. Is that, is that a correct way to, to look at it?
Well, it is, it is going to, it is a revenue in the budget, and we have and will continue to spend. Now, again, whether we spend it, you know, we're, 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 next, let's say, this past year, I think we spent $400,000, I think it was last year, on the one pump station. You know, this year, it's going to be another large amount. So, I mean, it's not that we're not spending the money, and frankly, some years, we're going to spend more or less than this. This is about, you know, and frankly, we, Councilman, you, you had been very definite about this, that, that we felt that the, the sewer system, you know, should, we should be collecting relative to what, what it's actually costing us. Now, if you want to, if you want to do that on a year-by-year basis, that some years it's going to be high, some years it's going to be year-low. So then how do you, how do you justify it? This, this puts together, you know, a way to basically come up with a cost that, that I would hope that on an annual basis, you'd review, as, as, as this thing progresses, that would, would provide, to cover the cost of running our sewer system into the future indefinitely, at, at a rate that's fair and equitable to the taxpayers or to the, to the users.
Councilman Kocoviac?
Yes, and to follow up your comment, I, I was surprised when I first got on the council and found out that we weren't charging what our cost was, we just kept the same fee for many years, and when we raised that, it just drove a lot of people crazy, from 185 to 250. But I, a key thing to me is that we charge this by the sewer hookup. We don't charge this by either a separate tax or, or as part of the property tax, which means that all the nonprofits that are in the township have to contribute the way we do this. And so I think it's really important that we do cover our expenses, because if we don't, if we, if we keep it low, then we subsidize it basically with, with, with property tax revenues, and, and I don't, I don't want to do it.
We agree with you completely.
Yes.
100 percent.
Yes. I just, I, I'm just, I'm just a little torn at, at how these, these things, some of these items just go way up, and then forces up our, our proposed fee from $250 last year to $303 this year. That, that's all. So I just wanted to understand this a little bit better, as to which was cash and which wasn't.
As, as you indicate, some of the stuff is up and some is down. It just happens that the stuff that's up is higher than the, than the others are down.
Yeah. And, and because it's, it's, it's sort of a mathematical, mathematical exercise, the more the mathematical exercise goes up, the more the fee, the fee charges, and, and just, I'll just leave it at that, I'm just really torn about whether we should, whether these are the right numbers to base it on, that's all. So, Council President, I didn't have any other questions.
Thank you, Councilman. Madam Clerk?
Is there a motion to adopt ordinance 2478-16? So moved.
Second.
Councilwoman Castellino?
Yes.
Councilman Garino?
Yes.
Councilman Kocoviac?
You asked for it, so you asked for it, and I got it.
I know, I know, it's, it's, I'm going to vote no.
Councilwoman McCartney?
Yes.
Council President Cirilla?
Yes. Madam Clerk, any ABC matters for today?
None, thank you.
Seeing none, we'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Second.
Happy Easter?
Happy Easter.
Happy Easter. Happy holidays. Have a great evening, West Orange. Thank you for joining us.